Mike Owen from the Dalmatians.
Trindorfson, principal.
I'm Frank Russell. Steven John, superintendent.
Sam Dalton, student member.
Evan Riley, student member.
Great, and we'll keep going if you don't want to.
Walter Jerriff from town.
Joyce Jerriff, Townsend.
John Eastwood, Townsend.
Sue Eastwood, Townsend.
David Dizner, Townsend.
Oh.
Jerry Dyk Wyndham?
Yes, C. Dyk Wyndham.
Not that we don't know you, but... And there's Mike. Mike there in the back from the reformer. Oh, and there's Barbara. Barbara?
Hi. Happy to work for us.
Barbara's working.
I listen.
Librarian, Townsend. And then Peter for our minutes. And the reform, and the Prada Community Television. Okay, so, um, we have agenda items that I bet you're here for, but this is the members of the public portion, so you're welcome to chime in right now if you'd like. I also wanted to say that, Stephen, you didn't put, um, I didn't have a chance to talk to you about the agenda, but you didn't put additions or corrections, but...
I should have that, yes.
But I, but what I wanted to suggest was that if there was anyone here tonight to talk about the budget, which I would be surprised if you were not, then we're going to move that up probably in front of reports. I'd actually said that at the last meeting anyway, I think.
Yeah.
That we would do it earlier.
Fine. So, we would move the budget discussion under new business, you say?
Um, the budget, all I was suggesting was moving the administrative reports down below.
Okay, below, uh, new business.
Probably.
Okay. So then...
Does that work for anyone else? That's my suggestion. You all are ready with that? I just hate to make people uncomfortable. Have to be here for all. I mean, you're welcome to stay. In fact, we encourage you to stay for every part of the meeting, but if you're here for one specific thing, I'd rather move it up for you, so... Okay. So correspondence. Does anyone have correspondence? I do not. Stephen's shaking his head.
I do have correspondence.
Okay.
But it's related to page eight eighty-three. That's this law, this bill about changing, reducing number of boards, basically. So this is from the Rutland Northeast Supervisor Union Resolution. Apparently, the Supervisor Union Board of the Rutland Northeast Supervisor Union had a meeting and took this position and wanted to share it with the public. It was voted on March twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. The R-N-E-S-U full board hereby rejects Bill H-eight-eight-three. We believe that elimination of local school board governance is not conducive to promoting our democratic ideals, fostering social capital, and the effective leadership of our community schools. We encourage the legislature to work with the Agency of Education, Vermont Superintendent's Association, and Vermont School Boards Association to identify specific statutory adjustments that would strengthen the effective coordination and management authorities of Supervisor Union boards while maintaining local district boards. We also call for adequate funding to restore the capacity of the Agency of Education to provide meaningful support and technical assistance to support effective practices at all levels. Furthermore, we pledge to participate with the Agency of Education, Vermont Superintendent's Association, and Vermont School Boards Association in promoting best practices to attract, support, and retain superintendents, principals, and school board members. There was another letter that came from...
I'm sorry, Stephen, can I just ask you a question? That was written to whom?
That was, well, it is not addressed. I received it in the mail on the thirty-first. It, I presumed that it was to be shared with our board, so...
Yeah, there's a lot of correspondence going around about that, so...
They had the, you know, wisdom to send it in an actual snail mail in an envelope, so I thought it was important, you know?
Was it addressed to Leland and Gray?
I didn't keep the envelope, actually.
Okay.
Other correspondence? Anytime.
If not, we'll move on to old business, because we're going to move administrative reports down. Second defeat of our proposed FY-fifteen budget on April second. I know everyone in the room is aware of this. It was a huge turnout, and we're grateful and actually really impressed that that many people came out to vote on our budget. And I cannot tell you how pleased I am, and I'm sure the board echoes that. It was pretty evenly split, but there was one vote more in the negative, so, against the budget. So we are now looking at our third review of the budget, and this time, we will actually be reviewing the budget. As I'm sure all of you know, the only reason it came back at the same dollar amount, the same spending level, the same budget, was because we had received a petition that required us to put the same one out. At this point in time, we are no longer under that requirement. We're going to move forward, as we were planning to do the first time before we received the petition, to review and revise the budget. And I had sent out an email to the administration and board immediately following the meeting, I mean, the vote on April second, saying that the administration would be prepared to come to this meeting, as they were the last time, prepared to come with a revised budget. So I'm assuming, yes, that has happened, and I know they have distributed a proposed revised budget to all of you and to all of us. I don't think the board has had an awful lot of time to look at it. Does anyone else want to share any thoughts about this defeat, or move right on into the... Or does anyone out there want to share any thoughts? No?
Are those budgets there laying there in front of you?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Please, if anybody, I thought Stephen handed them all out, but you know...
You don't have quite enough.
There's quite a few pages if you can share. That'd be great.
Do you want, you got a copy?
Thank you.
So all board members have one, right?
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, you may have to share if you don't mind, but we'll try to highlight.
I'd just like to congratulate Frank on getting this out. I mean, this is incredible.
Is it a joint effort of Stephen and...
I think we congratulate all three of them.
Sorry, it came from Frank.
It did get emailed from Frank to us in just in time for us to get it before our board meeting. They have been hard at work in a very short period of time, because as you all know, the plan, as we talked about at our last meeting, if the budget did fail, that we were going to try to do the turnaround a lot quicker, so that may be one of the first things. You want to speak to Stephen, perhaps, the protocol around proposing and voting on a new budget? So I know you've looked into that for us.
So I brought the law book. The fact is, we are a union school district, and when we go by Australian ballot, that the proposed budget is rejected, the union district board shall prepare a revised budget. The board shall establish a date for the vote on the revised budget and shall take appropriate steps to warn the public informational meeting on the budget and the vote. The date of the public information meeting shall be at least five days following the public notice. So we traditionally have gone with a thirty to forty day window, but in fact, it's, uh, union school districts can go with the, with five, it's almost longer than five days for the public information meeting. The date of the vote shall be at least seven days following the public notice. Now, the first step for the board is to come up with a budget, proposed budget. Later on in the meeting here, certainly, I will propose a time schedule that's pretty short, and that specifically, just so you know what we're thinking of here from the public's point of view, was Tuesday, the twenty-second of April for the vote. We traditionally, as Leland and Gray have voted on Wednesday, but I have received concerns from town clerks that it's better to be on Tuesday for an election and a vote. So we're trying to be responsive to that. We have five towns, five clerks to deal with, to support. And the earliest we could do is April twenty-second, because otherwise, we'd be voting during the spring break here, which I think is not advisable in terms of people being out of town. So that's, that's the timeline. Now, the information meeting could be the Monday prior to that vote, Monday night. The, another alternate date could be Thursday, but that's during spring, spring break time. But we could have two informational meetings. I think the board talked about having two at one time, maybe one in New Brook Elementary School and one here. Excuse me?
Town hall is closed on Thursday?
Right. Does that pertain to, the vote is on Tuesday?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to respond to, because one town clerk said Wednesday's not good, because they have to work that day, and it's usually their day off, so... That's why we're on a Tuesday, the twenty-second. Now, that'd be the Tuesday after we come back from, with the students come back from break. That's about the quickest that I'm proposing, you know, that's the quickest I think you can do. Now, the board can certainly discuss delaying it or making it longer, but the longer we wait, the more difficulty we have in terms of retaining the services of our employees and issuing contracts. I'm not really able to issue contracts to the professional employees, well, any employees, until I have a budget.
If I could just very quickly introduce Jeremy. Jeremy Keller from New Brook. Two new board members, and then Bowman came in after we did introductions. Bowman, Adadi from New Brook as well. We're all here now. Okay. So does anybody have any questions about the timeline? The board has not made a decision. The board will make a decision today.
Comments are welcome.
But feedback is pretty important. We've been trying to gather as much feedback as we can. Stephen has been through the town offices, but...
Well, and Secretary of State's office has approved that shorter timeline, so it could be longer, but that's, that's whatever.
That enables you to do, if it passes, to do contracts for things that need to be done, doesn't it?
Well, yes, but I have already negotiated. It's one of your big pieces of business tonight, tentative agreement with the association, the Teachers Association, that permits me to, to issue contracts later than the April fifteenth requirement by the master agreement, and the tentative agreement is for five days following a positive vote, within five days of a positive vote. Now, I also make it clear in the agreement that those contracts would be null and void if a petition were received to reconsider. Let's say there's a positive vote for the budget on April twenty-second or someday. Thirty days from then is how long the public has to get a petition together to reconsider the vote. So if the board received a petition of five percent of voters to reconsider the vote following the positive approval of the budget on April twenty-second, we would have to then go for a fourth vote. Last right back. Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway.
So if there's no questions about that preliminary, okay, go ahead.
Is it, would it make a big difference in your contracts if we push it back just enough so we don't have to have an informational meeting or anything during the break?
Well, he already suggested a day.
You don't have to have one on Thursday. You could have it on Monday, the night before the vote.
He also said we could have it Monday, the night before the vote.
That would be legal.
And that is not unusual for us to have an information meeting night before the vote, because every year we have an annual meeting, we vote the next day. So, I mean, it'll be up to us as to whether we want to throw in another one as well, you know, additional. So let's, let's talk about that as we, under, under setting the date. And if, if no one has any other questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, and I have not looked at this yet to know what the changes are, really.
We're going right into that in a minute.
Okay. As far as renovations to the kitchen and stuff, has there been a tour of the kitchen for the general public to see what the working operations are so they could see what needs to be done?
There has not.
No.
We have not opened that up, and we certainly will take that under discussion as we discuss the revised budget, because you'll see that has been changed.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Shall we jump into it? Who wants to start?
Sure.
So we have the budget document passed around, and Jeremy, did you get it?
He'll look at it online until Stephen makes it.
Stephen, I'm actually...
Actually, he says he doesn't really want one if it's emailed in, so he's got, he's got it.
We've got it on email.
He's got it. It came this afternoon. Okay. So if everybody's ready, let's jump into it.
Okay, so I'll give you a quick overview, and then Durin has a draft rationale. There are some edits to continue to be made on that document, but the budget document that you have in front of you, it shows a proposed budget of six million nine twelve, which is a difference of one point five percent from the prior year. That is a reduction from the vote that occurred in February, and then again on April second, down from two point eight percent increase. So the reductions, Durin has in a, in a rationale document that summarizes the key changes. The detailed budget that has been handed out to you and that was emailed has the, if you were looking at it on screen, you'd see yellow highlights on the hard copy. You're just, you're looking at the shaded area. The shaded area indicates that we've made changes. And the single largest changes are in the capital plan. We did eliminate the food service improvements and the improvement for insulation. So that, those two items in themselves is about fifty-seven thousand. In total, this, this budget shows a reduction of eighty-seven thousand net. There, there was some increases, because we know more than we did in December. Primarily, the increases were associated with students with special education needs that, that we needed to address in the plan. But most of the changes, obviously, were reductions, and the net reduction you can see is this eighty-seven thousand approximately. Another point of reference, if you had your annual report or your prior document, you would see the February fifth vote, original budget, had an increase of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand. This increases a hundred and one thousand. That's the eighty-seven thousand that I'm referring to in terms of the reductions that we've made. So I, I just mentioned the, the single largest reduction, but I, I think if I turn it over to Durin, and she could explain the various personnel changes and program changes.
Okay.
So at this time of year, all of the course requests are in, so we know how many sections of each course we need to offer, and it is that information from which we issue contracts. And almost every time, what we have planned in the fall is what we create contracts for in the spring. So we expect there's going to be five point oh English teachers in the budget. That's usually what we have in terms of course requests for required and elective courses. We do have a small incoming seventh grade class, and so that figures into the course request. And when we looked at the enrollments in all of the sections, there were three, or actually four areas where, I should really say, three areas where reductions are possible. The first area, number one, the cooperative, cooperative education teacher, Co-op, which is mainly student internships. From the student experience, if you think of our four block schedule, the teacher has three blocks of students, and that would continue, but the teacher has decided to not quite retire, but reduces hours in the process to full retirement. So he's going to point six. So he'd be teaching two blocks a day, and hiring someone to teach that additional block just goes to point three-three. So there's a little bit of savings from a full-time teacher to a point nine-three teacher. So what you see is, it's not, not a big difference. I would say something about these columns that you see in this document, which is very much a draft, that, you know, first you've got the item, then next to it is the change from last year, or that is, this current year's budget, and then the third column is changes from what we had proposed back in the, in December. So it was voted on twice. That's why the number, the, the changes are quite different.
Everybody has it?
Okay. So the, the second area, the second item is foreign language reduction in that, in terms of the course requests for French, it is point eight-three as opposed to one point oh. And, and so there's a reduction there. The, the third one is around PE and health, and that is listed there, and that is specifically as a result of a retirement, and then with existing staff filling in. Somebody's actually going from full-time to half-time next year. And based on our existing staff, we're able to fill that, particularly with a teacher who is currently point six-seven, who would then go to full-time. So the overall FTE actually is a reduction, so by one class. That, that's when, when you think of, well, how does this divide up? Point one-seven, imagine an eight-period day, one period less all year. And the same is true in the math department, that it can go down by one period all year, from five teachers to four point eight-three. Now, I just wanted to mention that in, when you think of our other departments, like science has five full-time teachers, English has five full-time teachers, those two subjects are, have four credits required for graduation, whereas in math, it's three credits required to graduate, graduation, just like social studies. Right now, social studies, the teacher, the number of teachers is four. So just for you to get a sense of that. In driver education, we eliminated the deposit on purchasing a car, which was going to be a three-year process. We'll have to delay that by a year. Some changes. I'm going really fast.
Yeah, it's okay. I think if you guys don't mind, we'll hold the questions till after she goes through this. Is that all right?
There are some changes anticipated from the Career Center because of the reduction in costs. Frank already talked about insulation and food service or cafeteria. For professional development, if there's any light in this, that the reductions are helped by an offset by Wyndham Central, and that there is somewhat more grant funding, federal grant funding that's come available that Leland and Gray can access as part of WCSU initiatives, for example, in literacy, mathematics, and other areas, so that, like the School Health Advisory Committee, so that while there's a reduction in professional development costs for the local district, we actually will receive more from Central Office. One of the concerns raised was that the increased cost for Leland and Gray for Central Office expenses for Wyndham Central staff, and, but in this case, it's actually, we get something back for that. I mean, we get a lot back for that service. I'm very grateful for my colleagues and at Central Office, but in the area of professional development, we would be gaining. And then some smaller expenditures around instructional equipment, some of nine, and then we took off the three-D printer, as much as that would forward our work. We felt that that would be a place we could reduce, under the advisement of my colleagues as well, about the school board, a less need for legal fees.
I'm going to keep you out of trouble.
We're going to do that on our own, okay?
And finally, reducing field trips. There, as Frank alluded to, there were a few changes that have resulted from new information that came about this spring that were not anticipated in the fall, and so that's what's listed under budget increases. I can review those also, but I'll take questions at this point about reductions. There's a lot here.
Okay, we're going to go to the board first, so that the board can have their questions answered, since they're the ones who are going to make the final decision. So who wants to ask questions? I know some of you have already marked up your drafts. Go ahead, Lynda.
I, I guess, as the liaison to the Career Center, I had, the kids that want to go to the Career Center now, it's, it's not in any way going to restrict their participation in that setting. This is a, we're getting income from other sources to support them and support our dues there, or whatever we pay.
The Career Center funding is prescribed by the funding law, and several years ago, they went to a six semester trailing average of enrollment for a billing mechanism, so that there's stability in budgeting. So everything that we've talked today has no, no effect on access for, for that program in Bradmore. And there is a reference on here, you probably saw, to the Career Center. And what that is, is it's the state statistic that comes out after we do our draft budget in, in December that says, here's the six semester average for Leland and Gray that you will pay the Career Center based on three years of trailing average attendance. So, so that, that's always an adjustment, and normally, you wouldn't see that, because we haven't had a revote, but we had new information, so we're bringing everything we know into this proposal.
As long as we still have access to that fantastic program.
No change.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ted.
The decreases in, as far as one class a day, say, of foreign language, French, phys ed, and math, is that going to negatively impact the master schedule and make it more difficult for kids to, to do these courses, fit these in, and say, fit in music, which has been a big issue?
I would say that is true of French.
So they'll have a hard time choosing...
Because we will offer French levels one through four, but we would have six sections of those areas, and one of the, and, but instead, there's five. So instead of, say, two Level Ones, it'd only be one. So one, I can, I can check if you're interested in that level of details, which section is actually get, is, has enough for two sections.
So that could postpone someone starting French when they want to?
Yep. But I would, but given that the number of PE classes we have, I mean, there's three people who are qualified to teach PE, so I don't think that's going to have an impact. We can run two PE classes simultaneously, anyway. And math, I do not see any impact.
Okay, and in the seventh and eighth grade, starting kids earlier, is that, are these cuts going to affect that?
So, for example, our current seventh graders, I, I, it's a second, no, no, it's okay.
I'll tell you about the French numbers.
Again.
I can.
So, do you want to, do you?
No, it's okay, just in case you don't have it.
Just a second. So this year, we have four sections of, of math for our seventh graders. Next year, we only need three sections, because the current seventh grade class is about seventy-five. Next year, it's about forty-two. So that's where the reduction is.
Were you asking about French in the middle school?
Yes.
So in terms of the numbers of students who've signed up for French, one in one section, there's nine students, and in another section, there's one student.
That's at the high school level?
It's all.
Oh, that's the seventh grade.
Yes. Can I answer all your questions? Patty?
Pardon me?
Anything else?
I'm sorry. Not for now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why is the three-D printer being eliminated? Was the rationale behind that?
Cost. Looking to save money.
Well, it's just that the three-D printer would be a huge learning tool for all the students. It's where the future is going and it'll aid the, um, the computer aided design courses. It'll also be able to serve the school for probably over five years. It's an investment that will benefit generations of students to come. And I don't think that deserves to be cut from the budget.
Thank you.
I gotta say, I, I agree with, that's a, for twenty-five-hundred dollars, I don't know what, what percentage increase is, but, uh, for the budget, but that's a really exciting piece of equipment, you know, for, for the kids. That's a big bang for twenty-five-hundred bucks that's coming out of here that's getting cut out of the budget.
No, please, go ahead. I would, I, I have heard, um, from.
You speak up, please.
He's got, he's got a pretty nasty cold, but go ahead with the try.
I've, I've heard from a, a Brookline resident, um, the, uh, a concern about, uh, prototype technology in the school, investing in that. And I, I'm not taking a position one, in, in favor or against. I'm just saying that I, I think we would need to do a good job explaining what Evan just shared with us, the, uh, the impact on, on learning, uh, the life, the life cycle. Cause I do believe there is a perception, and it's just not one person that I've talked with in Brookline, but I've heard this from a number of folks after the budget was defeated, um, that, uh, they don't like the idea of investing in prototype technology that is not, that is not, uh, proven and, and known whether it will, it will be a standard, an industry standard or not. So I, I'm just suggesting that if, if we deliberate over this, we, we, we wanna be pretty visible with our explanation because I, I, I've heard this issue, unsurprisingly, a number of times. It, I agree, it's a small amount of money, but it seems to have piqued a lot of interest.
More than the pizza oven?
Surprisingly, yes.
I, I actually have heard quite a lot about it as well. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I, I see here that some of the reduction is due to retirement, but how about, how is this going to directly affect the teachers? I mean, are we gonna have teachers that are gonna be here for, qualify for benefits or things that they've always had? How much are we really reducing the teachers?
Let's be good. Once, uh, once a teacher enters retirement, they're not, no longer getting the benefits of health or anything like that. They're in the retirement system. It is possible for a teacher who's in retirement to work, uh, up to a certain amount of money in the neighborhood of thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars in terms of income from a school in the state. Now, if they worked in another state, it wouldn't be any limit. If they worked in some other line of work, it wouldn't be any limit. But in terms of teacher retirement, that's, uh, that's a limit. And, uh, uh, so that's, I, I don't know that answered your question, but for accumulated sick days and so forth, none of that happens for someone who's entered the retirement system. They, if they were working part-time, as we have had some teachers work part-time after retirement, all that is prorated in terms of benefit, but no help, no benefit.
Okay, and the teachers that aren't retiring, that are having their.
It would be prorated. Any, any reduction would be, of their, uh, benefits would be prorated as far as their FTE as well.
Yeah, that's determined by the master agreement. All the, all the conditions of the master agreement have to be adhered to. One, one of the difficulties I face is in terms of notification. The contract, the master agreement requires, uh, me to notify the association when a reduction in force is contemplated. Now, in fact, uh, contemplated is a little bit vague, but in fact, uh, I did, uh, take pains to notify the, the, uh, union president and, uh, made sure that the individuals who might be affected by this, we'll see two of them here in our audience tonight, uh, were, were notified about this prior to the meeting tonight. This is in order to provide an opportunity for the board to hear whatever objections there might be to this. And, uh, I regret that there hasn't been, you know, earlier notice. But, uh, we really have been on a very short timeframe and I was not convinced that we would end up with this proposal as an administrative team until this evening at, at five o'clock. In fact, Frank sent this out at five-thirty or something like that. And that was about the time when we knew we're, this was our best shot. And, uh, I wanna make sure that the public recognizes the, the administration is presenting this list in good faith as to what we think can work. You can have different opinion and the board can have a different opinion. I respect an inclusive consideration of the matter. Uh, there's nothing sacred about this, but if you ask us to do a job to cut the budget, we gotta do it.
Right, sure.
And, uh, as far as reduction of force, I just wanna keep the public aware that there is no sign that enrollment is gonna increase in this school. In fact, this is the beginning, and the beginning of a process where we have to figure out how to, uh, uh, provide instruction in, in a more personnel, uh, cost-effective manner. And, uh, that's gonna be a challenge. Uh, and, uh, we, we certainly would rather not, as administrators, be in this position, but that is the reality we face. And as a board, I know you, once you get a budget approved for this, for fiscal year FY fifteen, you're immediately gonna wanna go into public meetings with, uh, including the public, staff and so forth, regarding what is the vision for how we sustain Leland and Gray's, uh, excellent educational opportunities for the long-term future, you know, not just next year, year after that, but five years down the road. This has to be part of a, an overall, uh, trend and plan that is viable and sustainable.
Even farther, maybe, we should be looking, so. Okay, go ahead, Patty.
One more question.
Sure.
The capital expenditures. So do we anticipate a greater need or this, or a level need for the kitchen? As it is now, we're serving thirty percent more meals than we were previously. Is that expected to go up, go down, or stay the same? And is the abbey group, are we in danger of losing the abbey group because of the difficult circumstances under which they have to prepare so many meals twice a day for so many kids?
Uh, to answer your second question, I'm not aware of, of us in danger of losing the abbey group at this time. And your first question, the overall student population is in decline. So my first year here, four years ago, we had four hundred and two students. Now we have about three hundred and sixty-five. Maybe the peak this year was three hundred and seventy-five. Uh, and it will continue to decline. Now, hopefully, our free reduced meals rate will not continue to increase. Right now, it's forty-eight percent, uh, which is a third higher than four years ago. And more people are eating the meals, which is, you know, great that we know that they're eating and that the food is, uh, um, popular among them, though their students here might kiss a break and say, no, we want it better, you know, great food tastes like you. But that's, that's the looks of it.
Lynda?
Yeah, I, I noticed in several categories, workman's compensation has gone down by quite a big percent. Is that hopeful?
Yeah, the, whether it's primarily a result of a bid, uh, we did an insurance bid for commercial insurance, uh, so property, uh, workers' comp, uh, airs and emissions. There were some pluses and minuses, but as a supervisory union, the bid result was, uh, prior year was a hundred and seventy thousand in premiums and the bid came in at a hundred and seventeen, the, the low bid. That's for all, all, all schools, so Leland and Gray has a share of that. Our share is lower.
And I realize that was in the old budget, so I apologize for bringing it up again.
No, that's fine.
Just a reminder of the benefit of having, uh, group purchasing and bidding among the school districts of the WCSU.
And I should mention that, uh, that, um, we, we've been very pleased with the resources that, it's the Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust that, um, was the successful bidder. And, um, that's, all they do is focus on, uh, schools, the school market. So they're bringing very valuable resources to us in terms of human, human resource guidelines, uh, websites that give us access to, um, various analytical tools, uh, forms, you know, for a variety of things. Uh, and then, um, electronics, a middle of claims, um, so the claims management is very, very, um, organized. So we've been very pleased with it.
Other budget questions from the board? Especially about anything you don't understand.
One more.
Go ahead. When we're done, I'm gonna open it up for the others.
Um, just, my, uh, concern I have is that we are so tight that we cannot respond without negatively impacting either next year or whatever ta- emergencies. Um, are we that tight with this budget?
Yeah.
I think we're tight every budget.
We're tight before.
Yeah.
I mean, you can tell by these cuts what we're talking about. It's not, kind of, you can look at each one of these and make a rationale for why it affects, uh, learning adversely or doesn't plan adequately for the future.
Well, in fact, Stephen, we could've had that, um, same statement made about the first budget.
I, I agree. I just think that these, these should appear to most people to be a little more, uh, concerning.
I was wondering, wanted to suggest as a symbolic gesture, that as a board, we forego the three-hundred-and-seventy-seven-dollar check that Frank sends us in Ja- in December every year. It's a drop in the bucket. I think it adds up to like forty-five-hundred dollars in the budget. It's not, it may pave the printer, but as a symbolic gesture, I'd like to suggest we do.
You can get the printer.
Paul, do you trade that for a printer there, Paul?
I, I second that.
Well, whatever.
I second that. That's a good idea. You know, we, we get something each year for being on the board, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven.
Actually, it's, that's after taxes are taken out. Board members get four hundred, chair gets five hundred. That's the stipend that we get as board members, just for clarification. So it's being suggested that we don't use that.
We need a motion.
Okay. Other questions or comment? Shall I open it up for questions? Oh, go ahead.
One more thing. I just, I, I went through, I got the budget email early enough to actually go through it. I made, I scribbled notes all over my agenda and I gotta tell you, everything I made a note to talk about is actually addressed in the rationales, right? It's like, you know, you guys did a really good job putting that together. Draft or not, it, it anticipated pretty much, you know, it did a pretty good job of anticipating every question. Thank you.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that. So thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anybody out there have any questions for us or comments for us? Please feel free to speak up. I know, um.
I have an emotional one, so I'll try not to be. I've worked here for thirty-four years. I'm planning to stay next year. I am still planning, so you can't get rid of me so fast. Sorry, it's, whatever, will come out, will come out. I deserve a little more information. I get a phone call at six-twenty-five, I prefer not to be filmed, actually. At six-twenty-five, uh, announcing me of this possibility. Some eyes looked at something at three this afternoon. Do you think, uh, someone would have looked a little earlier or let me know something instead of finding out? Of course, I haven't seen those numbers, nine and one, sounds horrible. I have right now twenty in French III. It's going to be next year, the biggest French IV that I've ever had here. I understand those numbers of nine and one. So anyway, I can't ramble on because that's what I'm doing. I really am outraged at the way things are done in my regard. That's all I would say. And there's a way of speaking about the numbers and making things look horrible for French. It's been done before. That's all I would say. I'm not expecting answers right now.
Okay, thank you. I, I would just say that, um, in, in defense of those who have been working on this, and I, I can't speak to anything that you're talking about specifically, that's not a job of the board. But, um, there has been some really hard work done in a very short time period, um, by our administration and their staff as well.
I understand that. You wouldn't be in, you wouldn't be.
Well, my, my only point is that, um, you know, like, we said, this didn't get emailed to us until just before our board meeting as well. So I would imagine those decisions were probably made right up to the last minute. So I'm, you know, I, I'm not trying to defend her or, or anything. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood this is challenging for everyone and certainly for you two as well.
For, for people like this more than probably for the board, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Go ahead.
Sure. Gerald Julian C. C. and I teach Spanish and Annie's colleague. And, um, so I guess, one of the things in looking just even at the French, where it says low course enrollment, we've come up against this many times where it's portrayed as low course enrollment, but in fact, it's a conflict of scheduling. And you have all heard this many times before, that, um, so we haven't had a chance to look at the master's schedule. Um, I know for myself, um, and again, I'll repeat myself because I've said this before, um, you know, where our upper-level courses are almost always scheduled against AP English, which is a very popular course. We work very hard to build the program up, um, and now, starting in the middle school, to build the program up so we can offer courses at the level three, level four, and then advanced placement. So our kids have a very competitive edge in applying to colleges. But so often, in the last few years, both of our level three and four classes, we teach at the same time and they're scheduled at the exact same time that AP English is. So in the fall, AP English is a year-long course. In the fall, it's against our level three class. In the spring, it's against our level four class. Um, last year, I had seventeen students, again, a large number, sign up for level four class. Eight were able to fit in. This year, again, I had, um, I don't know what the, I can't recall the full number, twelve that signed up for eight, uh, for Spanish IV. I have, um, five students in the class because they have to make this choice, AP English or level four Spanish. I have devoted and committed students who want to, um, continue with the foreign language. And we all know, foreign language is not a required, um, subject in our school. It's not a required core class, but everyone here knows that it's required to get into a college. Very few colleges accept students without some, at least two years of the foreign language. And the more competitive schools, they wanna see levels three, four, and AP. So I feel, um, you know, we're undermining ourselves on one level. And in fact, um, and that's a few years ago when we were in this position and the same thing was happening with the French department. The rationale was low course enrollment. Well, we can show you those numbers. It was not. It was a conflict in schedule. This year, maybe different, maybe there's only nine and one coming in because we do have a small, um, seventh grade class coming in. But again, what about those upper-level classes? Is it because of low enrollment, because of lack of interest? Or is it because, again, of a conflict of schedules? We don't know that, um, and I, you know, haven't had a chance, but I know they've been doing the master's schedule. I don't wanna be, again, that little squeaky wheel all the time to Mr. Dolrick, but, you know, just imploring him, do not schedule our level three and four classes against AP English. So, and I know scheduling all classes are, are a big problem all over the place. So that's one thing I wanted to point out. Low enrollment is not necessarily lack of interest. The other thing that I wanted to say is I noticed that all of these reductions come from our high school. But, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but is our budget also including, so is it just the high school, middle school, high school as well as the supervisory union office? Is that also included in the budget?
It is included in our budget.
So why is it that all the reductions come just from the high school and there's no reduction from the supervisory union? I'm sorry, just out of fairness.
Well, I was just gonna answer, but Stephen's gonna stand up, so I'll let him answer.
I'll take the heat for it.
Well, you don't need to take the heat for it.
Well, the, the fact is that the Leland, the supervisory union budget is voted by the supervisory union board in, uh, December. And then it's loaded into all the budgets throughout the, throughout, throughout the SU.
That's correct.
So at this point, the board, this board does not have the option of cutting the WCSU assessment.
So that's not a budget that's voted on by the full voting public?
The SU budget is, 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 um, assessed into each school district based on their.
It is a, it is a point of legal debate in the legislature about changing that.
Well, is there something that the supervisory union can do to help reduce some of the costs to then? to then reduce, you know, there's somewhere within the supervisory union that you could find a way of reducing by a few thousand somewhere that that might help not have it all come from the high school budget. So that's one idea. And the other is the possibility of this being a 1%.
Excuse me?
Of this being a 1% instead of 1 and 1/2%. If this is a 1% decrease. Because the way the vote turned out, there, you know, it was split pretty evenly.
Right.
I guess there was a large turnout, but I think.
You're suggesting that the board could go down to 1.9% or 1.7% or something instead of the 1.5% that was proposed.
The 1.5, right.
Who's the reduction? From a 2.8?
From 2.8.
We've reduced it to a 1.5%.
One, yeah. So we have to go so low, that's what I'm saying.
That's what we're debating about tonight.
It's a matter of political decision.
Yeah. So that's what I guess I said, that's.
Yeah.
Black and white figures here. And instead of it saying that it's reduced to 1.5, it's reduced to 1.8. That would be a 1% reduction.
I think at this point in time, the board is looking at it as individual pieces that are being proposed to us, and so that's what we'll be deciding on tonight.
I guess I would just say, you know, let other people talk and thank you. And I like Ani, Mr. John called Ani at 6:25, so I got my phone call at 6:35. So, and I would have come on, otherwise I'm also sick. I had sore throat, earache, so I wasn't planning coming up until I got the phone call. So we, oh, we're stuck here. And because we didn't think that it was going to be affecting salaries, or not salaries, the teaching staff. So.
I'm in line.
Let me see. There's one more thing, but if you would like to talk, I'll come back. Is there something that's just.
So just to be clear, obviously, a number of these cuts can be, as proposed in the administration, can be reinstated to bring the budget up to instead of 1.5, 1.7, or something else. I mean, that's entirely, the board is in a tough spot of having to decide what they can pass. I wanted to answer the question about the budgets. The, all of the school districts, the 10, 11 school districts that have budgets have loaded in their assessments and those were all passed by budget on town meeting day.
By vote.
By vote of all those towns. I mean, this is part of the governance problem that we have here. The few faces Leland and Gray Union School District voters is that the assessment to the superintendent's office, so-called, which also involves the agency fund where we share PE teachers, art teachers, so forth, among the small schools, that's all voted by the supervisory union board. And then the boards have the option of reducing their assessment to the SU after the town meeting if they have some part of an art teacher. You know, they could reduce that, but it's still a reduction of force. But that's the way boards could cope with a shortfall in their budget approval. If the town meeting day, a person comes up and says, we want to spend $20,000 less, the board of towns and the board of Wyndham or wherever could decide to reduce the force and their share of their contribution to the school nurse or the art teacher or library or whatever that's employed by the WCSU. So that, I mean, that's the predicament right now. The governance bill that you heard about is really trying to address some of those problems because if it's all one budget, then it isn't, you know, it's no longer a problem. It's a problem getting the budget passed, but it's not a problem of pitting one part of the budget against another in terms of members in the WCSU.
I guess the final statement that I would make is that this last vote was determined by two, basically two votes. One would have tied it and we would have had another vote. Two, in favor of it, would have passed it.
Yeah, well, actually, one could switch and that would do it.
Exactly. Or two more people voting. So in favor of it. But the fact is, it was not a lopsided vote. It was not overwhelming voice either side. It was pretty split even. And I guess that I would like to say that if we, if the board would consider less of a reduction, that there's a very good possibility that that would pass with less of a reduction, less detriment to the school programs because the voters wanted it, you know, 299 people wanted what was still presented initially.
Thank you. So just so everybody understands, the Leland Gray Board hasn't had a budget defeat in, what Frank helped me, 10 years at least?
More.
And to have two go down, one after another, is a message to us, and we are not not hearing it. Let me just finish. It is a message to us. Nothing you said was not true. There were a ton of people who supported this budget and came out in great numbers. But there were also a very large number who came out asking us to not, I mean, not support this budget. So the difficulty for this board is to decide now that we know we need to reduce, that's not an option anymore, we know we need to reduce. It is a matter of what is the least painful decision because honestly, we felt very, very strongly that the budget we proposed to the communities was the right budget for our students and our taxpayers at this time. But clearly, that is not an option anymore. So now we need to reduce. So as we reduce, we are taking into account everything everyone's sharing with us, including not outside of this meeting too, because we've all heard, I know all of us have heard, even from supporters about what you should be reducing. I certainly have heard from supporters what you should be reducing. And I'm certain everyone else has. So whether we decide it's gonna be least impact to keep the French courses or whether we say it's the least impact on the students to keep the kitchen or whatever, it's gonna hurt us just as much as it's gonna hurt anyone else. So I hope everybody understands and is patient with this difficult decision that we're all going to be making tonight because we recognize that it's very personal for some people, but some of us who've been doing this a long time could feel pretty personal about it too. It's tough, you know, it's a tough decision to make, but we're gonna make it anyway and we're gonna move forward in a positive manner. So thank you for the feedback. It's critically important and I know there's others who wanna share. So you had your hand up.
I was just curious, because you said, you know, that you've gotten the message. And I'm curious what the message is.
No. My meaning was just no.
Four towns.
I understand that. But we, but it matters that it's, that it's, you know, the overall vote went down twice and that's telling us something. It may not, it may say something different to you or to anyone. All I'm saying is nothing beyond, we can't read into it about any specific line item because we vote Australian ballot. There's no way we can do that except anecdotally. So we have to make a decision based on what we believe is right for our gut and the feeling, the feedback we're getting. And it's pretty mixed, honestly. It's no different than the governance bill that we're all dealing with right now. There's a lot of people who are supporting it wholeheartedly and there's a lot of people who are saying adamantly, do not go anywhere near it. And there's an awful lot of people in between. So it would address the accountability issue at this SU level. It's one of the reasons why it's being proposed, but there you go, you know. So it's just one of those situations where we're gonna have to just make a decision. And it has defeated, been defeated twice regardless.
Right. But I'm just, I'm curious what the message is that you're picking up because Townsend was the one.
Right. But, but you're hearing the message is what I'm saying. We're all, we're all expressing it. Go ahead.
I could, we are hearing a message, but we have no idea of the specifics. We know that in four towns, the yes voters, the yes were more than the no's. However, in Townsend, there was a staggering 76% who voted no. That we know. What is it that they don't like about the budget? That we don't know. We can reduce the budget increase from 3.9 to, what is it, to 2.8%? It might get defeated again because we don't have specifics. We would love to hear specifics from the Townsend residents who tell us, you know, what it is about this budget that really irks them. Is it line items? Is it an overall philosophy? Is it individuals? Is it personalities? We have no idea. We just present the budget and it gets defeated twice by very large margin in Townsend. So.
It was also only, you know, it was very close, to be fair, in Brookline. It was only, only passed by one vote in Brookline and Newthing had a much higher percentage of no votes than is typical.
And just to clarify, I'm Townsend. I'm from Townsend. And that's what's concerning to me. And, you know, I know people aren't here and people are not speaking up, but I'm concerned that you guys are making decisions without knowing, without an informed decision.
Well, that's correct. And that's the nature of the Australian ballot vote. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just wondering if when you present, I'm Sue Eastwood from Townsend, okay. When you present the budget the next time, is it possible, at all possible, to do line items? I'm just asking. Is that, or does it happen to be one whole total? I, I'm just putting it out there because when you are talking to people in your places, you know, where you, of your place of business, sometimes they are talking about specific things. Yes, this, we need more money for this, but not for this. So I don't know if this has ever been done before, but I'm just putting an idea out there if that's at all possible to do a line item.
You mean to vote?
She's talking about, you know, port, taking, pulling portions out and voting on them separately.
I don't know.
You can't do that.
That's what she's asking. Can you do line items?
Oh, oh, oh. Okay, let me, as a moderator, I think, let me just make sure I'm thinking, if you're sitting at a meeting with a bunch of voters, it'd be possible for you to establish to, what do you call it, take parts of the budget and take them apart because it was a motion, first of all, warned as a total amount. Then you could take parts of it out if you wanted, or you could vote on certain parts of it.
Reduce from the floor is what he's talking about.
Reduce from the floor. You could actually speak about the PE investment or the capital investment and specifically have an amendment or an emotion, a motion on that. This is the dismant of the Australian ballot. And they're speaking to the frustration as a resident of Townsend that even perhaps if you were, if you had some ideas for the board, you'd probably be sharing them with us. A number of them from Townsend, I mean, you should have the benefit of your insights if there's something that should be said. And you certainly should share with the board your opinions of the matter, even though you have no way of knowing whether you're representing the majority view or not. I mean, it certainly is something that's helpful at this point. And that's the frustration that board members and frankly, the administration finds in having to go through the budget based on, on what? We have based some of our reductions on comments that were made at the annual meeting.
Or subsequent meetings.
Yeah. There was certainly concern about the personnel cost. So anyway, that's, that's the tough row we're in.
Go ahead, Dren.
I did solicit people's opinions after the vote in February and it was, and I also received a lengthy email from a resident who actually took it upon himself at his place of business to ask lots of people, some 20 people, for their views. And that, as much as I could, was incorporated into this, into the draft of changes and cafeteria. And Frank had warned me that in previous budget proposals that include, included a renovation to the cafeteria had been voted down and had been many, I don't know how many years since it's been included before, but we had the need, so I had originally included it. So that was that. The Wyndham Central budget, and you have heard that that's not something that we can change. However, I'm glad to share that we do get increased funding back for professional development activities. And overall, it's a significant reduction, 21,000, from what we're paying this year. The third area of concern is the very, in some subject areas, low, the teacher-student ratio. That class sizes should be bigger. So there is an impact on the full-time equivalent course or department of teachers. And the fourth one, which is something that is a much more complicated issue that is actually a budget issue in a sense, which is about parking. Frustrations with parking in front of a school on, you know, the town road of 3035 and the town green. Now, years ago, there were three full-time administrators and one administrator had stickers for personnel and students' cars and would monitor the parking of cars and would identify whose cars were parked on the green, find the students in the building and make the move and give them some kind of consequence. Our administration is 1.75 and we are way over our heads with student needs that, addressing the barriers that keep them from accessing their education. And it's not about their, it's not about transportation. And so it is, so I, I mean, this, I understand that this is a problem and I don't have the funds for a school-based solution to the town problem. I'm thrilled that Leland Gray is in town, not somewhere in the boonies as I've seen many other union schools built far away from civilization as if they never wanted to see the children. And it's great to have a hospital there, it's great to have a town clerk's office there, it's great to have resources right here nearby. And if a kid leaves campus, I know that there's a sidewalk and they're not just walking into a highway like I've seen in other union schools. So I, I would love to enter in a conversation with Townsend residents about this issue, but with reductions in the budget, I don't have personnel to even manage. And it has not been a problem for cars parked on campus. Like, we don't ever have like a strange car, whose car is this? What's in the car? We, when we look at our discipline issues or safety issues, it is not about parked cars on campus or in front of the building.
Good. Go ahead.
I just have to say that I tried social media to try to get some information from Townsend voters. And while I got cost of the car, new car, and why are we getting a new car for student drivers, the cost of the kitchen and the kiln, no one mentioned anything about cutting teachers. So I just.
Good. Other comments or feedback?
There will be one out there.
Well, that was my concern when I said the budget. I felt it was a fair budget. What bothered me was the specific of the purchase of a new car. And I think that will save a lot of money. Certainly, they could purchase a leftover model or a rental car. I, you know, I would rather see the 3D printer personally because that will support the STEM program. It's, it's like we're going in a different direction with international global studies. This is very important. It's like taking the place of a trade school. You know, years ago, we had a trade school. This, this new computer, the STEM program, the science, technology, engineering, and math is very important and I really do think the printer should be in there. I was against the car in the whole budget.
Would that make a difference?
Yes.
With a number of voters?
Yes.
I think the line items, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, like Sue said, the line items.
I just have a feeling that the line items would make a difference.
Yeah, well, obviously.
But they can't.
The board's, the board's gonna go over that right now, line items, basically looking at these.
Well, that's why we're here because.
Have an influence.
It's actually no different than what we do during budget development as well. I mean, now we're looking at specific things for reduction, but when we're going through the budget development, it would help us an awful lot to have feedback from community members to come in during our budget cycle. That happens every single year. To hear that kind of feedback, we very rarely do get it then.
Well, I would be happy if that was cut out. Thank you.
Because I think that was like a $30,000 item or.
Ridiculous.
That's the kitchen.
No, the car was $7,000, but it's for a three-year cycle.
But it's over three years.
It was a three-year cycle for, we were gonna put money in and buy it at the end.
We legally have to offer.
The kitchen, I believe it should.
Hold on, we're doing too many people at once. Frank, answer that question.
Well, just to follow up on the car, we bought that car in 2007 for $18,000.
Right.
We get a very big discount from the state of Vermont because they want the car, obviously, say if they need it to be a car that meets a typical standard that a student's gonna meet. So you're probably not gonna find a car much less than that in the, in terms of, from the state's point of view that needs this fact. Of course, I bought my car, it cost me $700, I'm very proud of that. But anyways, so that car, you know, having bought it in 2007, this is the 2015 budget, you know, it's, yes, we can, we can go to an eight-year-old car, a nine-year-old car, but at some point.
Eventually, we have to replace it.
And the big concern is, you've heard from the board, is the enrollment is dropping. If we don't do our capital items now, the funding formula makes it harder and harder to acquire capital because all they do, the funding form, it says, what do you spend? How many kids do you have? That calculates your tax rate. As your student enrollment drops, your tax rate's gonna go up. So that's not the time to buy your car.
And we legally have to offer drug rate.
We have.
There was one hand up in the back, and then I'll go to you, sir.
Yeah, could we, as anybody?
I'll go to you, Barbara.
I'm sorry.
So, no, it's okay, go ahead. Her railway.
Has anybody looked into like Valtavol Ford and see if we could get a car with their logo on it, their advertisement for?
We, we have done leases before instead of purchasing and it's the same idea.
From Duran or one of the big dealers?
Yeah.
I'm sure they would give you a, a fairly good.
It's a good.
Or a donation would be nice.
Donation would be best, yeah.
We've had, we've had good.
They would, they would put their logo and their advertisement on it. Hasn't been.
We've always got a pretty good reduction on the, on the purchase of a car. Barbara?
Um, I got involved with Twilight's social media experiment and I thought it was a great idea. It didn't work so well for me. But what, what I wanted to ask related to that was, to speak to the cafeteria, it's not a cafeteria. It never has been a cafeteria. It's crowded. So I guess I just want on the record, it's not a cafeteria.
That's correct.
Right? There, there isn't one. It doesn't exist. It's a makeshift, part of kitchens over here, part of kitchens over here, kids are coming in the middle. Right? I just, am I wrong?
There's a reason why we, we agreed with the proposal from the administration, for sure.
So I just wanna go be on this.
I just suggest a tour for people that.
That's a great idea, absolutely good idea, and I'd be happy to.
Well, in fact, we have done that before. We've done tours of the building and we have, not only have we set them up with students to, to take community members around during, you know, open house or whatever, different, different bond proposals we've done that with. We can certainly do that again if there's interest. In fact, if anyone wanted to come in and, and nobody in the building was available to do it and they wanted to set it up with me, even I would be willing to do it. But I, you know, we have to be, we have to be mindful of the fact that school's open and always busy, but there's no reason why we couldn't set up tours if there's a request for, for looking at school, absolutely. We want people to come into the school and see what's going on because we are very proud of our school and what's happening here. Any other comments or? Oh, sorry.
Yes, I think, I just wanna clarify, and Mrs. Easton?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Eastwood.
I'm in another world here.
No, that's okay. I think what you were suggesting about showing the line items and what I think that the board may have interpreted was could people pick and choose what items to not include? And I believe what she was saying was, no, just show everybody what's the anticipated cut. So when you vote yes or no, this is what you're voting to cut. Not, not that you're gonna choose, well, I'll vote only if they put this back in and they don't reduce that. Just that people see very clearly that when you vote for this budget, you are voting for these cuts.
So, so, just so you know, that's exactly what we do every time we put out a budget proposal with our, with Dren's. Very useful and helpful budget rationale. We put that out there, we get it out there everywhere. Dren's done it tonight in a, in a draft form, she's gonna do it again before this, you know, to, to redo this. That's exactly what we do and thank you for, for suggesting it. I'm hoping everybody is aware of it. It's on the website, it's put out there as much as we can possibly get it out there to explain to everybody what it is that are up, you know, ups and downs in our budget.
And the rationale also explains how it correlates to goals. That what she, what she hopes this increase or decrease will actually, what the outcome will be from it. It's a wonderful, wonderful document.
Okay, we've got another hand up here, Jeremy.
Well, you know, the, I'm concerned the rationale, like your, like I have your December rationale. When we first looked at this, right, but well, the history is important though.
Yeah.
Because every item that you talked about, the school needing, and this is why, are the items that people have thrown back to say, we don't need that because we were given specifics. Now, if we wanna go through the specifics of the three hundred thousand dollars in the co-curricular budget, I'm sure some people have problems with some of those numbers too. I mean, these are the specifics the voters were given, so they're the specifics, every single one of them, that they're commenting on. And I don't think they know, there's a lot of other money in the budget in other places that they don't have the specifics about, so they don't really know where that's at. And at the kitchen especially, or the cafeteria, like, it was over forty years. They've been trying to pass a budget for the kitchen and not pass one. Something to the effect of before I was born, I'm forty-four. So they've had beg, borrowed and steals equipment, you know, not steal, but like, oh, it's free, we could use that, bring it in, plug it in, it'll keep something whole. Since before I was born.
Times are changing.
Well, but, and we're trying to attract students to our school from other countries and other districts that will help fund our budget and keep us afloat. And that's the kitchen we have to show them. And that, if it doesn't attract students, students care about the food they eat during the day and what they have accessible and also the three D printer and those other things. I mean, those are things that would attract students to the school. You know, I'm for cutting sports programs and let towns feel it because, you know, I know Townsville cares about their sports. So.
I agree with that.
And how do we get people to come to the meetings?
Seven, seven, four.
I feel academics take precedence over sports. As much as sports build teamwork and leadership, Leland Gray has quite a large sports budget and we should not let academia suffer and allow sports have no reduction at all.
Good. I'm sorry, I was.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Sorry, I missed the cafeteria and the sports got won.
Oh, and how do we increase participation while we're doing the budget? We're going over the line items when we have our, our meetings that we're working on the budget, all that budget work. And that's quite a few meetings and we throw in some extra ones. And also the annual meeting, that's a, a great time to ask information about line items and things. And, and people don't come to the information meetings and we can change our minds at that time.
Well, not the annual meeting, but we found in the budget development.
No, but at the informational meetings and the.
Budget development.
Yeah, we can change our minds and, and things can be clarified and people don't come.
We vote on our budget, just so everybody understands, we vote on our budget the second, typically. We don't always have to do it, but we typically vote on it the second Tuesday in December. That's allows us to have the thirty or forty-day warning period that we need prior to the annual meeting.
A meeting before that.
There's several meetings before that for development.
Yeah, and for pub, one specifically for the public to give their input before we vote.
There is, we hold one, just for community input. Barbara?
I just wanna say one more thing, if Jeremy was talking, that as a school I ran, in school, there's no place for the kids to go to. I am desperate for them to have a lunchroom or a cafeteria where they want to be there, that it's pleasant, there's enough room and they can be there when they're on some downtime because, because this is a really busy place and, and kids like to hang out somewhere and this is the place. And I, I'd rather not, I'd rather they have a place to eat that they wanna be in, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Dren.
There have been reductions in co-curricular activities.
Yeah.
There have been combinations of like the major sports. I don't know about soccer, but I can't, I would have to check specifically, but, and baseball, softball and basketball. That's like, for example, in middle school, we, we had higher enrollment, it was seven, thirteen, eight, thirteen. I'm not sure they're gonna be middle school things, because of those blow enrollment. I, the same is, cross-country isn't running, golf isn't running. So these are part of the negotiated co-curricular agreement. There are some slight increases. So if you look at, I mean, in this document on page twelve, it says, it, that says salary, there's actually a reduction in the salary there. Overall, the increase was just zero point two percent, I mean, which is kind of like a decrease essentially because everything costs more. Each year the stipends go up for, you know, the varsity coaches and, and all of the others. Also wrapped up in there are class advisors, theater, music. And actually, theater did get reduced, but music did not. So this is a, that, that, it's, it's not just a, we were, we reduced where the participation was low or, or like in golf, I mean, virtually none. But the other areas where the programs are strong, it's very hard to justify any further reduction in co-curricular.
So if I could just make a quick statement about this process we're going through, because I've been through this so many times in the past. When, when we as a board, we don't run the school, we don't operate the school, it's not our job to do that. We rely on our administration to make the recommendations for a proposed budget that comes to us. We give them, we work on goals as a board. This is important. What do we want our students to know when they leave? What are our, what is our vision for our students for the future? We actually get together for retreats, we're gonna, we're setting one up soon. Once we get a budget passed, we're gonna have a meeting to set for a retreat to review our school board goals for our school. And when, when the administration moves forward with their budget development, they're basing it on their professional knowledge of not only the work that they do, but of the school that they're in and the needs of the children in the communities. So we, as a board, don't always support their recommendation, but we do, we do respect and support their proposal to us. So when we had a three point eight percent increase that was first proposed, the administration had some hesitation about that. The board certainly had some hesitation about that. They asked them to go back and they came back with a lower increase. We, we have this kind of a balance back and forth. And, you know, we, we go back and forth about this. And when we finally vote on the budget, the draft budget to propose to the communities, a lot of thought has been put into that and a lot of back and forth between us and the administration. When we are, when we're caught in a situation like this, we again need to rely on our administration in the same way. You know, if we said to someone, and I, you know, due respect to Jeremy, because I understand completely what he's saying, we all feel the same way about one place or another in the budget. If we said we were going to reduce sports, there'd be a different group of people in the room, that's all. And so, I, and I'm not saying anyone isn't right, correct, passionate. You know, if we could do what every single person asked and wanted, you know, our budget would be a lot higher. And, and it's just a really hard job for us and for the administration to sit here to, to decide which is going to be the least painful, you know, for our school. So, you know, we're gonna continue to take this feedback for the rest of this evening and I hope you'll continue to give it. I'm not trying to stop this conversation, I want you to give as much as you can because it's really important. But there were five hundred and ninety-nine people who voted, who probably have five hundred and ninety-nine different opinions outside of the ones that voted in this room. So, you know, we're just gonna rely again on what we know is right and how much we support this school and these students because there is great need. And I truly believe public education is being threatened and I think that's a travesty. And I don't think it's just here, I think it's all over the country. And we need to stand up for our kids and that's what we're doing here. You're doing it, coming to us, and we're doing it, sitting here listening to you. And so I just want you to know how much we appreciate you being here tonight. We're going to take all this information and we're gonna do the best we can. But, but yet, everybody's not gonna be satisfied in the end, I don't think so. But we do need to make sure that we present a budget that is reduced in some form that we believe will, you know, meet the expectations of the community so that it pass, the communities, so that we have a budget in place that passes. That's really important to us, it's very important to our staff. They need to have contracts in place. Steven?
I might add that I will be feeling very vulnerable if the positive vote, should there be a positive vote, is in the neighborhood of one or two votes.
As we feel vulnerable now.
That's not enough for me to take to the bank to write contracts with people. So keep in mind that the board, I mean, I'm, you know, pleading with the board to make sure when you adopt a budget proposal tonight, that you're convinced it's gonna pass by a margin. Because we can't afford to have a petition for reconsideration and have a vote then again for the fourth time. There are towns up north, the town of North, that did six times last year.
Well done, voted six times.
They didn't get the final budget until September. Uh, it's real hard to employ people when you don't get a budget till September.
Never.
As much as you say that there's been a lot of thought put into this, I really would like to respect that, but I can't. Forty-seven percent decrease is an arbitrary number to me. We are not, we're taking shots in the dark here, we don't know what people want this budget to read. We don't know why people are voting it down. We can only guess on the little information that we have, the small samples of people who voted it down and why they voted it down. I mean, for instance, if we even shop for, you know, one point six five percent, that would be about forty percent reduction. That's an increase of around thirteen thousand dollars, enough to float the foreign language program. Are people going to go to the polls and vote it down because it's forty percent reduction instead of forty-seven percent? Forty percent is a political number that people can get behind and say, they listened to us. Forty, it's forty percent less than what they proposed. Forty-seven percent to me is a very arbitrary number. I think we need to stick to a specific decimal point that people can pass the word around that, yes, this Leland Gray School Board did listen. And that would give us some operating capital to relieve some of this stress that is now affecting all of us.
Well said.
Well said.
Howie?
I agree with Evan and I gotta say, we have to put this, this budget rejection in the context of what's basically a statewide taxpayer revolt against school budgets. You know, four out of five towns voted in favor. I mean, I personally know enough people that would have turned their vote around based on just taking the pizza oven out of the, the budget. You know, I mean, to me, that alone would be, would be worth bringing the budget back without the pizza oven and I bet you it would pass. I'm really disappointed about losing this three D printer. It's a, it's a tiny, tiny little thing that's going to get our kids ready for the future. This is what, this is what all we hear about from the state houses, better training for our kids, prepare them for the jobs of the future. You know, Frank, Frank mentioned when he, he talked about it, that this is an untried technology. This isn't an untried technology, all people think.
I said I've heard that from.
You've heard that, so people, you know, people are misinformed about this. This is a, a established technology. These things, ten years ago, these machines cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not twenty-five hundred dollars. These things are gonna be in every factory that, if they're not in there already. I mean, this is a, a really important piece of equipment for the tech ed part of our, our school and I would urge that we put that back, that we put back the language component that we took out and we bring this budget back reduced to the public for another vote.
Is there any, you know, the people that actually voted percentage-wise was small, if I'm not mistaken? Throughout all the towns.
Frank, do you have a number?
It was a percentage and it was like.
I think we had a percentage.
Twenty percent of the voters came out or?
Which was a lot higher than the. In fact, it was the, it was the highest we've ever had it since we've been voting Australian ballot.
Really?
Yeah.
Is anyone gonna get more voters out? Look at that.
Yeah.
Well, well, I would assume that, you know, I would assume that our next proposal may get more votes out.
You know what I think the problem is? We're retired, we don't have children in the school system. We have grandchildren that are in other states. And in, and when you're retired, you don't go in the school. You don't see the workings, you don't know what's needed, you don't. Really, I, I'm embarrassed to say I haven't been in this school. This is the first time. And I'm looking around and I'm seeing things that need to be done.
That aren't in the budget.
Yes, yes, I know that's material.
No, I saw it, no, it's important.
But I think maybe, I volunteer at Newbrook School every week for seven hours. And I see there, I know it needs to be done. And so much has been done in the past two year with Chris there. And it's been wonderful, but most people don't know. Because once their children are out of school, they don't know what's needed. I think you need an open house. I mean, just because people don't have children in the school, maybe do some sort of event or invite the town in, show them the kitchen. I mean, if you're trying to serve forty-eight percent pizza and your oven is taking forever, you know, you don't have an hour lunch, right? You've gotta get that out and get them moving. Right, you've gotta get that out and get them moving. It's a necessity.
So, I, I wanna say it again, I appreciate the hard work that the administration is doing this. And I know it had to be really tough. But I need my opinion known that I'm not pleased with this. I don't wanna see, I look at this and I go, ah, our children are gonna suffer. And I really like what Jeremy said about, you know, if we're gonna be a competitive school, if we're gonna be an attractive school, you know, and you can't make these kind of cuts. And also being, you know, I was in the working world and I, and I see the people that are coming into business and, and we need to be doing more and we need to have the 3D printers. And the technology is just mind blowing, the stuff that companies are doing these days. So, I, I, I don't wanna see any of these cuts. And I just, you know, I just needed to make a statement.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So, just, so you know, we, we feel, you know, very similar every time we look at these things, you know, but we go out to.
No, I know.
Make a decision somewhere here.
I know.
Which means that we need to think about where we're gonna go with it.
On the subject of the 3D printer, and this is gonna be my final limbo, isn't it? On that subject. Is that, the 3D printer is a symbol. It's, it's not just a prototype that the kids get to play around with. It's going to be a flagship for building the STEM program at this school. Apparently, there's low enrollment in technology courses. I'm enrolled in all of them and I know that there was very low enrollment in the classes that I was taking. And there's nothing more attractive for getting kids to wanna take a class and enroll than having kids run around with creations that they designed in a 3D modeler and print it out. Imagine kids going around the school with, you know, toys, robots, tools, things that they can use, things they can take home, show mom and dad, people around the town. It'll really promote the program and grow that program. And as more kids wanna take that program, we can invest more money in more technology for the future.
Okay.
I heard a question about STEM. It's science, technology, engineering, math. And actually, there's an, there's an interest to promote STEAM, to add art to that. Because the connection between technology and art is certainly very significant.
And, sorry, one more point, being part of the parent advisory. I know a lot of the parents are saying, hey, let's, you know, add more, ask the kids to do more, make the curriculum tougher, the coursework that they have to complete to graduate, you know, let's do four years of math. I mean, I'm shocked to hear that it's only three path routes. I thought it was four.
You know, it's funny, as we do this budget development process all these years, we do this, we say the exact same things. We, we have been saying over and over again, we've, we've been watching the trends for declining enrollment coming. And our challenge has been to find a way to maintain the programs that you're talking about right now, that Evan's speaking about, while our enrollment is declining and boundaries are getting tighter all the time. And we have to be creative about ways to do this because we know, and we've talked about it specifically as a board, what are we gonna do to make sure that even though there is so much more competition for each and every student out there, including our own member town students, there's competition for them as well. And, but, but we have quite a few tuition students at Leland and Gray. And even if we lose one, it's a real loss for us. And we have lost tuition students over the years. And part of that is due simply to declining enrollment, but I think it's partly because of declining enrollment everywhere and recruitment from all walks of life, you know, all schools. So, you know, there, there, it's a huge challenge. But we recognize as a board that it's critical that we do maintain the programs that we have. But we also knew we were gonna come to this day where it was gonna be harder and harder to do it. So, that's one of the reasons why I think again, the conversation's happening at the state level about governance. Is there a way for us to share resources easily across multiple schools to be able to keep programs in place, you know? And so, that's what, you know, that's what we're exploring. I hope it continues.
You were saying how you're creative about financing. Are you putting out there the creativity? Because I know a lot of people are like, well, you know, the pizza oven. You know, they think they could put out and went, oh, yeah, we'll get that one.
Well, once again, if we've got, if anyone will listen, we'll tell them all about how creative we are. It's a real challenge to get people to come to our meetings. We hold, we held three information meetings this year. I think we had three people at one, one person at another. And then, then we had the annual meeting, which had about 20 people.
And when is the WCSU budget meeting, the board budget meeting?
The, the vote happens in the beginning of, of December, am I right?
Yeah, there's a meeting in November.
First Wednesday in December. And there's a meeting, two, two meetings in, prior to that, for development.
Because I know that's a big question that came up, that the towns and town meeting.
They're public meetings, yeah. Leland and Gray has three representatives on that board. Even though we have 52% of the budget, we still have by law, three votes on that board.
Another government's issue.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we cut the equiv, we, 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 and I haven't really worded this out yet, but we reinstate the equivalent of line 1, 2, 3, 4, 9, and 10. And bring that as our new total for the budget. And also that, and I don't know if I can do this volunteer, that we don't take our pay. But I don't know how that would work with a motion.
I suggest to make a separate motion.
Okay. So, I don't know how we word that, so that's what I'd like to.
Okay, so we'll need, I mean, well, well, I would mean, it might help if we had.
A total.
That number. So, if you could just, Frank's adding them up.
Would you say 1, 3, 9, and 10?
1, 2, 3, 4, 9, and 10. Put those back in.
I second it.
You're gonna unretire people?
Yeah, why, why would you leave the retire, why would you put back the retirements? Those are voluntary.
No, I take that one out.
Okay.
One and three are retirements.
Are they then?
Are they?
Oh, so one and three.
Well, they are because it says reason for reduction, retirement.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
2, 4, 9, and 10, put back in.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, no, only one person at a time, please. So, Patty, you, you, did you get that? Did you understand?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Were you amending your motion accordingly?
Yeah.
Hold on, I second.
Okay. So, put back 2.
Howie has to be in there too on that.
We, I think we can do this with a friendly, friendly change. If, if Howie's willing to agree with you, you know, you can remove those two from our original motion. If Howie's agreeing to the second.
Yes, correct.
Can you have 12 seconds?
So, it's.
Those two are removed?
Two? Hold on, I'm gonna read it. It's 2, it's 4, it's 9, and 10. Is that what your motion was to remove 2, 4, 9, and 10?
Yeah.
From the reductions?
Yes.
Yes, going back.
And is that your second, Howie?
Yes, I will second.
What about 12?
Hold on, hold on. This is not your motion. This is a board member's motion, please. It's time for a board to have a conversation about it. Okay, time to discuss. And Frank, did you have an actual number? When you, when you pull one up, just let me know.
Mm-hmm.
Comments on the motion that's on the floor?
Although I'm a non-voting member, what's the deal with the math teacher reduction being taken down? We didn't discuss that at all. And Dr. Dorfman stated that it would not disrupt course enrollment or disrupt people's schedules. It's also distributed among, how many teachers? Among the five math teachers versus?
But it would impact one teacher.
Yeah, so, why would that, why are we including that as part of the motion? Value for development, 900 bucks.
Well, it's based on enrollments and the numbers we have. Now, whether we wanna face this or not, we are going to have to figure out how Leland and Gray can run with fewer teachers. What we're gonna have to do like Marv wrote it and ask all the teachers to continue a year for nothing. No increase.
Or reduce the number of days of the school year.
I mean, you gotta say personnel costs somewhere. That's where the major part of our budget is.
For this kind of decision.
So, I, I, you know, I, I realize the point of view is, we would like, and the board certainly can make a decision to restore every position to full time. But you can't, you can't cut the budget. You know, that doesn't get you in the direction that you're, that the voters have told us to go. So, it's, I, you know, it's okay. I, but we've been asked and settled with the burden of deciding what we can actually provide and continue the programs we have. And I understand that some people are skeptical, but that's the basis of this decision.
I, I agree with this cut.
Right, we understood that.
Right.
It has to do with the low enrollment in the middle school, you know, next year. We just have a physical smaller class. Forty-two versus seven is a significant difference.
Absolutely.
Okay, other comments?
I, you know, I, as, as unpopular a position as this probably is to take, you know, I think it's the beginning of a long road of trimming the budget even more than we have to do now. I think it's a mistake to take a step back. The administration has found places where they can trim things. And I, I do like the idea of the, of the 3D printer, but apparently that's one of the hot button issues that people have spoken about, along with the kitchen and the driver's ed car. I think, you know, those hot button issues, as much as we may, as much as they may have value for our students, if we want people to come out and support our budget, they have to become sacrificial lambs. And as for the rest of it, you know, we, we're, we're simply delaying pain as our enrollment decreases this year so that next year, we, we have to sit here and make harder and more harder decisions. I think, you know, again, as unpopular a stance as it is, I think we oughta make these cuts, these hard cuts and go forward.
I would like to see, this is an emergency situation and this happened very last minute. And I think it has the possibility to lack transparency because of it coming out at 6 o'clock at night and then being voted on that same night. And I know I had issues when things like that were done and I read about them in the minutes before. It, it really was like, whoa, what was that all about? So, I, I think we can plan in our next budgets for cuts possibly to, to personnel. And the personnel knows about it well in advance. They have an opportunity to speak to it. I think doing that at the very last minute like this has done, I, I have concerns about just the transparency of it.
Lyndall?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if, I know Frank's working hard at it. What, what is the total implication for the budget?
That would be 49,000. 120 would go back in to the budget. So, if we added 49 approximately, because I would have to go in and make all those changes and then all the FICA and workers comp and all those payroll related things. But just approximately 49, 920. If we put that back in, then our proposal is going to be, so we have 101,001,14 now. And we add 49, it'd be up 151,000. And that divided by the base of 6,811, would be a proposal up 2.2%.
2.2%, which is more than what we had recommended the last time before we had a second one, budget. We had come back the last time and made a recommendation to the administration to reduce it to 2% from 2.8.
And Frank, just to clarify, that's with eliminating, uh, hold on, 1.
You should use the numbers up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's cooperative education is putting it back. Oh, you wanna go with the, was it eliminating? Okay, it's eliminating driver, the driver's ed.
Yeah. Car.
We're taking the career center savings. We're taking the professional development savings. We're taking the food service savings and the insulation.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it.
The school board legal fees and the field trips.
Yep, and those two, yes.
Field trips and what else? The co-op, of course.
Yeah.
And professional development.
Yep. So, the numbers that add up to 49,000 are, are the 5,049 per co-op, 12,743 foreign language. Your, your number was a little different, but, but foreign languages is, is what it is. 14,922 for the PEE. We're gonna, we're gonna.
That's where I think we have a difference.
I think you have extra numbers, Frank.
Oh, you came back and you dropped that.
Yeah, we dropped it.
For the retirement.
That gets us down to 35 or?
1 and 3.
Oh, I was doing calculations, sorry, okay. Yeah, let me, let me get.
Okay, folks, let's get it.
Let me get rid of 1.
Give him a minute.
Okay, so, let, let's do the savings now then. I'm sorry, this is what we're restoring. We're restoring.
We're restoring.
Foreign language, 12,743 is the actual number. Math, 12,706, we stayed with that, okay?
Yeah.
And the 1,200, we're restoring the 1,200 for computer science equipment, 2,500 for IT.
Yeah.
That adds up to 29,149. And then if we come back.
149?
Yep, 29, 149, sorry.
Okay, now we're down below 2.
Yes, now we're at 1.9.
1.9.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, there's, it's, hold on, there's.
We're first now.
Yeah, Howie?
Yeah, I wanna speak to what Joe brought up about, you know, the upcoming budget reductions. I don't think that's, what, no matter what we reduce now, we still will have to deal with that next year. When we reduce more or less now, what our budget's gonna be next year is what it's gonna be next year. So, I don't really feel like that's an issue. I think the important thing is that we bring a reduced budget back to the voters for another shot.
Okay. Any other board comments or questions? Go ahead, Bruce.
I was wondering if there's a conflict of scheduling for the languages. Does adding the money back, will that help? Or will that still just leave those children without classes? Will it make a difference to add that money back?
Well, we're not speaking only about French for this. It's an issue for not only French, that's also. I don't feel qualified to speak, but it's not only, it's the higher levels of the three languages we have here. I don't, I don't have an answer actually to what you just said.
But, Bruce, that, the, there will always be challenges for scheduling, I think. You know, as long as you've been on the board, you've heard them. I think they're always gonna be there. Whether, the question is whether restoring the position will eliminate the challenges of students being able to sign up for courses.
Eliminate is a huge word. So, in terms of increase the opportunity. So, the more sections that you offer of a course, the more likely it can fit into more students' schedules.
There you go.
Course requests are a factor, which is what has led us to where we are now. However, if it is a course that's a level one course where students decide at a, because there's, you know, there's different turning points in the master schedule. Right now, it's all the course requests.
Drew, can you just explain that part for, we've got new board members, we have new members. Explain about the course request process and that's because that is what you're basing a lot of this on.
So, if in about January, we adopt the new program of studies, like any changes in course offerings, any changes in graduation requirements that are required by the school board, that would happen in the fall, so be prepared for it by that point. Then, our school counselors meet with the students about, so the students make their course requests for the following year. And the course requests are what creates the master schedule through Power School. Goes through something like 6 million different, billion maybe, combinations until a sched, a master schedule's produced. And then the school counselors go in again and hand schedule each student to make sure that they got the courses they requested plus graduation requirements plus, because I mean, the graduation requirements are in there, but things bump each other out.
Right.
So, and, and third, that they have a full schedule. So, that, so, so. So, that, so, in the stage we are at right now, we have finished the course request, and we're, and we're in the process of making the final master schedule. This approval process is part of that. We have been unable to do so until it was just last Friday that we had the final course request in. And then, master schedule's made, and sometimes teachers, this happens in May, they did, the schedule's set, but sometimes they decide to swap. So, math teachers or science teachers, you know, people could teach different content areas, they'll say, oh, no, I'd rather do this and that. But the schedule stays the same, and then the tweaking of individual schedules continues through the summer.
Thank you.
But the master schedule gets locked in place in early May.
Go ahead.
To answer the question that was asked originally, where is money if it goes back into the budget in use for, for what it's designed for, which is the language and the math?
So, for, for the language, I would say yes, because it, because, for example, right now, it's, I was talking about French one. So, if there are students who have openings in their schedule, and then they have a choice of classes to take, they can take French one if they've never taken French before, which is the majority of students. They've chosen another language, or they haven't chosen a foreign language. If it was, say, a competition of French four, well, very few students could get into that. For math, I would say it wouldn't make any difference, because it has, it's a direct result of fewer sections we need for the incoming seventh grade.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? No? Go ahead.
So, in the, so what would be proposed then for the next vote, which, an anticipated date?
April twenty-second.
April twenty-second, so between whatever is adopted tonight and...
We're going to actually get to that, that's what your question is. That's the next thing on the agenda. Just talk about that, yeah.
Okay, well, what I wanted to know then is, so then, whatever, I mean, this is pretty clear, and yes, the budget rationale is very clear as well, but sometimes it's easier for people to look at something very clear like this.
No.
Is this then published in this summer quarter?
Again, I mean, I'm not trying to be disrespectful in any way, but we should, we need to keep our comments to the motions on the floor. And unless you're commenting on the reductions that we're...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just running on the motion.
No, it's fine. We're coming to it, so hold on.
All right, I'll wait, I'm sorry.
Okay, any other comments about this motion?
So, Doreen, did you just say that the math teacher isn't going to have any impact at all? And yet, our motion has us putting that back in, so do we need to reconsider that?
Well, I can't tell you.
No, I'm talking to the board. Doreen just said that, so...
Well, let me, let me point out something here. In fact, the motion may be based, the motion may be based on the board's sense of what is politically acceptable and presentable to the public. You may feel that despite the recommendation of the administration, that it's important that we emphasize, as you said, the academics, and we do not reduce the math at this point.
Yep.
Now, if you're asking me what the chances are of having five full-time math positions and a subsequent budget proposal from the administration, if you got me as superintendent, it's slim and none, because we don't have the kids. So, I hate to be harsh with the public and everybody, but that's, that's my tough job. I got to call it. So, but, but I understand and respect the board's motion and would support it. This administration will support whatever the board decides, okay? But it should be considered on the basis of your political sense of what will get us a budget, because we, I'm sorry, the administration cannot proceed to follow your direction to lead and provide instruction for our students unless we have a budget.
It should also be based on what you believe, you know, is right for our communities and our students.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm afraid that if we cut too many programs, academic programs, that we could stand a chance of losing the towns that voted for our budget. I know Jamaica might sit up and take a lot of notice, and they passed it very easily.
I was just going to say that I think that, based on the feedback that I've received, I think people would, cutting teachers is going to be a hard sell. If you say the driver's ed car, the kiln, whatever, the kitchen, I think people are going to be behind that more than they see people cutting jobs.
Yeah, that's hard.
Well, that is, that is not only what, you know, you're hearing, but it's typically what happens in almost every community, which is often why schools are in such a terrible shape. Just so you know, we have made a commitment, I just want to speak to that, because we at Leland and Gray have made a really strong commitment to our building, and we've worked very hard to not only be very cost-effective in maintaining our building, even with a tile that needs to be replaced once in a while. We've done a really good job. We have a school that is in excellent condition, because we've put a commitment into that. I don't want to ever be in the situation where some of our neighboring schools are in, where they're saying, you know, we can no longer keep our school open, because we can't afford to repair it anymore. And that does happen, so I commend the board and the boards before me on it for making that commitment. So, there is value to it as well. And it's value, it's community dollars, taxpayer value, for sure, so. Okay, is any other comments or questions? Because if there's not, are you ready for, ready to vote on your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in, I'm sorry?
Can we restate?
Yes, you said, yeah.
Whatever, I'm not talking about...
Peter's going to read it to you.
All right, I think that's a move that line two, four, nine, and ten be reinstated, seconded by Howard.
Can we state that in that, well, well, I mean, you could put the amount in as well, but, but just in the document, the Leland and Gray proposed reductions to the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school budget document, just add that piece in there, so we know what document we're talking about, when we're, when we're talking about the specific numbers.
Yeah, that's basically a list of reductions that the administration recommended consideration by the board. And so, everybody understands, so what you are approving is one, three, five, six, seven, eight, eleven, and twelve, you know, plus the increases at the bottom, right?
Reductions are going to be one, three, five, six, seven, eight, eleven, and twelve.
Those are the ones you're approving, is it a positive way?
Correct, those are the reductions.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Me.
Any, one? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay.
Thank you.
So, now we need to talk about what Gerald was trying to bring up, which is, I do have a, under here, setting the date and not only the vote, but the budget information meeting and approved warning.
Okay, so just to review again, my recommendation is Tuesday, April twenty-second, for the Australian ballot vote in the five union towns. That would mean require an information vote, an information meeting before that, and the latest you can do it before that is obviously Monday night, the eve of the election. And as you pointed out, you'd rather not, I think Howie pointed out, rather not have an information meeting during the spring break, which would be Thursday the seventeenth, I believe is the date there. So, that's my recommendation, and you can, as I said, extend it out longer if you want a longer time for the public to be engaged or to have information meetings. That, once again, is your judgment. Just remind you that time is of the essence at this point regarding our employment obligations.
Are we able to get this information out in that time frame?
What, you think you bought a mailing to everybody? Well, we're going to warn and have a warning, I mean, if you've decided on an amount of money, now unfortunately, I'm not convinced that we have the exact figure, but Frank will have to go through the details of that to get an exact figure. Then I think the board should tonight vote on a warning that is stating that proper amount of money, without actually knowing what the exact figure is. Now, that's a little bit questionable, but if you want to have another meeting, you know, to do that, that's certainly the board's prerogative. I do have to have a warning posted, following that timeline as proposed this week, so it has to be posted Thursday or Friday. And we'll probably go for Thursday, because some of the town clerk's offices are closed on Friday. So, that's my, you know, that's why I'm saying I'm precedent in terms of the timeline. But that would be the way we would proceed, and then we would be able to get a mailing with these lists out, if the board so desires, during the vacation week. And I understand that people are away, so maybe they don't get their mail. And there are lots of reasons why to put things off.
Does anyone know how long it takes for them to absentee ballots and to deal with that, because that's an important part of the voting?
Well, you raise a good issue. The Secretary of State did not advise me that there was any problem with that.
Well, it's very clear that there's many less days, about half the amount of days, because normally we've, we've proposed a budget and give thirty days.
We could supply the town clerks with the Australian ballot by Friday.
So, they would have a little more than, they'd have about ten days.
Once we know the number, all we have to do is take the previous document, change the date at the top, put yes or no, you know, yes or no box, and have a different number of the money in there. It's not very complicated.
But, but it doesn't change the issue. The issue is that it is much shorter, and I don't know about any other towns, but I know Newfane had a large number, like almost a hundred, eighty-five or something absentee ballots.
Well, I'm sure if Mr. Farr is able to get a snart article out in the paper, that it would be, you know, at least in the paper and the news.
Because they've got to mail out if the person is still, is away now.
Yeah, sometimes people do it.
And then mailed back in.
Yeah, well, that's a reason to put it over time.
So, what it means is that anyone who's out of town that holiday week, they wouldn't probably be able to get the absentee ballot before they left.
If they were going to mail, yeah.
Well, even if they weren't, because they'd leave Friday, probably. It's highly unlikely anybody who's gone for vacation is going to go into their town clerk's office to vote.
Monday.
Well, they, well, vacation is, most people who are going away are going to leave on the weekend, so.
I'm sorry, no problem.
Howie, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's too soon. I think we should push it back at least one week. I think twenty-ninth would be a better date. It's, the holiday coming up, I don't see that there's...
Steve, please.
What would the impact be to postpone this one more week? I mean, I don't see teachers that, that would be finding another job based on not being able to get their contracts to, even if they may.
I'm okay with...
Stephen, can you answer the impact question?
The impact, it's hard to speculate, okay?
I mean, does it compromise any work you have done to get that in?
I have a tentative agreement for you to agree to later on, that, that made sure we were flexible regarding the date of the vote. I didn't pin ourselves down on that with regard to, okay? I mean, I'm, you know, figuring that out ahead of time, because I'm not presuming you're going to go for the twenty-second or anything.
Yeah, I just think the twenty-ninth can be more appropriate, given that there's a holiday week coming up, and we need to get the word out on this, and I just don't see that it's so urgent that, that one week's going to make a difference.
And just so you know practically what the impact is, that it just pushes another week off until the contracts are really in effect, which is May twenty-ninth or something like that, thirty days later. And so, but I will be able to issue the contracts within five days of the twenty-ninth, if we got a positive vote. Here you go. Now, if we don't get a positive vote, then, well, then, back to you directly.
So, go ahead, Lyndall.
I just want to ask, now, you've all been through this process with us, that you go back out to your towns and explain, because it's very hard to have people understand what happened, and I know that you, people have a very good understanding of what went on and how it occurred, so I would like to ask that, is that all right to do?
Of course.
Okay.
You should encourage everybody.
That you go back out and just explain what happened.
Everybody behind that camera as well.
Oh, right. The whole world.
I'd like to point out, with the twenty-ninth, I still would want to get the warning out this week. I'd want to get that budget figured exactly.
Yeah, correct.
So, we can get the absentee ballots.
So, Frank's got the, it sounds like Frank's got the number, so maybe we can vote on that warning.
So, I move that we schedule...
Do we, I mean, do we need to have a specific, is this, is this the motion for the warning?
No, this is, this is for the twenty, for vote on the twenty, vote for the election.
Right, I'm moving to...
Well, we can do that in the, as a warning, if that's what the warning states, that's all I'm saying.
Well, people, okay.
I mean, if you're, you know, the morning is for a specific, date specific to vote on Australian ballot, so that would be...
Right, well, I'm moving to that we have the Australian ballot on the twenty-ninth and the warning as appropriate.
Well, we're going to have to vote on the warning tonight, but is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, so the move is seconded to have an Australian, I'm sorry, what was that again? Have that Australian ballot on the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth of April.
And you said, and, and, warning...
And the warning as appropriate.
As appropriate.
Information meeting with the board?
He didn't say that. That wasn't his motion. Okay, any comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes, now we...
Money.
Which is what the motion will say, both the date and the money.
Six million, nine four three, one eighty-five.
How much?
Six million, nine four three, one eighty-five.
Want me out there? Adjust your programs accordingly. Six million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. That's the new proposal. Well, we don't know what is so. That's the proposal.
There will be, this, because we're changing not just the bottom line, but we're changing, you know, line items in here, we will be putting out on our website, the corrective budget for people to see, as well as if Doreen has time to, when Doreen has time to finish it up, a change budget rationale as well.
That's an increase of one-point-nine percent?
Yes.
One-point-nine.
No, I don't think we're required in the warning to state the increase.
No, but it's...
Just to let you know, that may change in law, though. That is one of the proposals that the legislature...
Okay, so if someone has the warning specific, why would...
Well, I do have it on my computer.
Just read it out of the...
Yeah, just read it, so I can...
You can read it right out of our warning.
Legal voters, legal voters of the Leland and Gray Union High School District, number thirty-four, comprising the towns of Brookline, Jamaica, Newfane, Townsend, and Wyndham, are hereby notified and warned to meet in the town offices of the town of Brookline, the town offices in the town of Jamaica, the New Brook Firehouse, Vermont Route Thirty, and the town of Newfane. We're going to have to change that. Been a request to go to the town office, for Newfane. So, scratch that. It'll be the town office for the town of Newfane.
All right. Is that the one you were talking about?
The town hall in the town of Townsend, and the town offices in the town of Wyndham, respectively, on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, to vote by Australian ballot on the following question, beginning at nine AM in Brookline, ten AM in Jamaica, nine AM in Newfane, nine AM in Townsend, ten AM in Wyndham. Polls will close all, in all such towns, at seven PM. Article one, shall the Leland and Gray Union School District adopt a budget of six million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars to defray its expenses and liabilities for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year? Question mark. Date at Townsend, Vermont, and the date will be probably the tenth, I mean, it could be the eighth, you voted it today, but it, it's, yeah.
When it gets signed.
When it gets signed, so it'll be probably the tenth of April, year of two thousand fourteen. We do have to get the town clerk, our board clerk.
School district clerk.
And that's still Kathleen Bree. We have to get that along with you, Emily on the signature.
Okay, we need a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Joe, seconded by Mike, to approve, to recommend that warning. Any comments or questions on the warning, as we heard Stephen agree? If not, you ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
One, no? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. Now, we need to, let's see, this is Stephen, you're next up on here.
Okay, I'll catch up there. I'm next up here on...
Turn it around a little.
Oh, yes. Okay, where the heck is that? Yes, here it is. Since this is a contractual matter, I just want to make sure that people are okay. I think in this case, there wouldn't be an objection from our counterparts regarding it. So, I will state it publicly, if there's something to debate... it, um, so I will state it publicly, if there's something to debate about it, I think we have to go into executive session because it is a matter of a contractual negotiated agreement with the Teachers Association. Does everybody understand what I'm talking about there? The, the present master agreement obliges me to issue contracts by April fifteenth. And what some superintendents have done, my colleagues have advised, is to reduce force, give everybody a pink slip and tell them they're all fired. They're all not, not fired, but they're all non-renewed. Now, I don't think that's a very honorable way to treat an employee, so I don't do that, but I'm, that obliges me to negotiate a tentative agreement with the association that enables me to not do that and not abrogate the terms of the contract, but in fact issue teachers' contracts, professional contracts, five, within five days of a positive vote is the way it ranges. So, here's what the memo says. Given the second to veto the proposed FY two thousand fifteen budget for the Leland and Gray Middle High School District Number Thirty-four on April second, two thousand fourteen, the WCEA and the school board agree to the following stipulations to offer teacher employment contracts for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. All other terms of the two thousand twelve, two thousand fifteen master agreement remain in effect. One, Leland and Gray teachers' contracts will be offered within five days following voter approval of the FY fifteen budget. Two, such contracts will include a contingency clause that the contractual offer is valid thirty days following voter approval of the FY fifteen budget, assuming that no petition to reconsider the vote is received by the board. And it's signed by the co-president of the WCEA and Leland and Gray Board Chair, if approved by this board. Uh, the, it's a tentative agreement, so it depends on the other side agreeing. Uh, the association is going to have a meeting tomorrow. I'm assured that this will be, uh, received positively and approved, but, uh, that's...
So, you're looking for the board to make a motion to approve that tentative?
Motion to approve this tentative, this tentative, it's called a memo of understanding.
Memo of understanding.
So, who?
Okay, it's been moved by Howie.
I don't know if I can read it.
And, yeah, and what your motion was and authorize Emily to sign on behalf of the board, right?
Yes.
I thought so. And I think Mike's seconded.
Are you giving it?
Or you do?
I will.
Jeremy seconded it.
Jeremy seconded it. Okay. Any questions or comments on the memorandum of understanding? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Extentions? Okay, motion passes, I will sign for the board.
We have a good questionnaire from a board member.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
I'm wondering why there's one member of understanding and there's three separate contracts that we issued.
Okay, uh, well, the one, the paraprofessional contract doesn't have that same stipulation of requirements for the April fifteenth. Uh, that's the support staff agreement, and the co-curricular contracts, you know, which is a, not an entirely separately document, but anyways, is a similar, uh, arrangement with all our co-curricular advisors and sporting, sport coaches and so forth, that is also not under a April fifteenth.
So, the answer is, there's only the one contract that has that April fifteenth date that we need to get extended.
This is so-called the professional bargaining, professional teachers bargaining agreement, and it does cover other school districts. However, those school districts have approved budgets, so I'm able to issue those contracts. Also, keep in mind that because we have such a wonderful situation here in the governance and employment, that there are employees, there are people who work at Leland and Gray who will receive contracts by April fifteenth. Those are employees of the WCSU, the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, because the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union budget has been approved. So, be prepared for those anomalies and, and apparent, uh, strangenesses or something.
All right.
Apparent inequity.
So, are we set on our revised budget? Nothing else that you need to get our action on or nothing on the agenda?
Did we want a flyer, the, the two-page flyer?
Oh, that's the point.
You want the two-page flyer and vote it?
Two-page flyer, and we have to make the date certain about information meeting. Thank you.
Yes.
Good night.
Uh, let's do the information meeting at first.
Let's do the information meeting first, hold on a minute. Um, so, we have a record, so you, oh, no, it's changed now.
Now, see, since it's the twenty-ninth, you could go for the Thursday before, if you wanted to have more time between the information meeting and the vote, or if you want to have two information meetings.
So, he's talking about the twenty-fourth. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is there a good attendance at the informational meetings?
Not typically, but that doesn't mean there won't be. I always have hope that there will be. Um, I think the twenty-fourth is fine. Is it fine for everybody else?
Yeah.
Information meeting, this is an information meeting for, um, the Australian ballot vote the, the following Tuesday. Now, Gerald wanted to say, sorry, Gerald wanted to say something regarding this, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We haven't made a decision yet, so...
Oh, haven't come to a decision on that?
Not on the information, no, no, on the information, so we're waiting for your feedback.
Oh, okay, well, okay, so, so that's what I wanted to know, and then once we come with that informational, um, meeting date, then prior to that, obviously, um, on the school website, what other formats will this information be presented, or where would any of the voters find?
Yeah, we're, yeah, one of the things that we're talking about is doing a mailer, but I want to make sure that Frank can share with us what it costs to do a mailer, because that's one more additional cost. Um, of course, we'll have it on the website for sure. We'll have it not only on Leland and Gray, but we'll have it on the Wyndham Central website as we always do. We have copies typically, um, available here at the school. Do we do them at the town offices?
Yep.
Well, we're talking about the mailer, not, not the...
She's asking where else we would have the, the budget rationale.
Format of information.
Find the information.
So, it'll certainly be on the website and do, maybe we want to include that, maybe the board has a, sort of an opinion on that, we, we could include that in the mailer, probably is not significantly different.
Seem to be a request to have a line item.
Well, it seems to me if we're doing a mailer, it's not the same as the budget summary that we mailed before, because we don't need this, probably the school board and superintendent report in there. So, we could replace it with, you know, we'd have to develop the mailer if we're going to do it, and we could replace it with a budget rationale.
Yeah, with...
Or modified version of it. So, that's one of the, one inch for you.
Who receives the mailer?
All residents, yeah.
It's all residents. There's a, there's a few that, that may not get it if they get their mail on, from Putney Mountain Ridge down in Putney instead of, if they're Brookline residents. There's a few little places that unfortunately don't get them because they don't get their mail in town, one of the five towns, but it goes to all five towns, all mail-in residents. Frank, what's the cost of that, of four?
The mailer?
Like this, the four-page?
Yeah, I, I think it's about thirteen hundred, I don't remember right off the top, but I think it's somewhere there.
And we have a quick turnaround, so can we do the quick turnaround?
I, I don't know, I was just sending Peter an email asking.
Okay.
I assume...
Because normally we have longer...
Yeah, the, the crunch printers always have is all the town meeting requests, and we're not competing with that, so I would think we'll have a good chance.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming.
Just a couple of quick follow-up questions then, and I understand how the ballot, having voted, I understand how the ballot is written, um, but I guess I just am interested to know if there's, is this even legal, that if, where, where you have your yes in favor of the vote?
Yeah.
Not in favor, no, not in favor. Is there ever a way to put in there, if you vote no, indicate why or something? Because the other thing would be, I know, it, it sounds crazy, but let's just listen, let's just suppose that, what about if you, if it were voted down again, would you know whether it's because the budget is still too high or the budget is too low?
Right.
How would you know? And it could be...
Just like in, just like in every other Australian ballot, budget vote, not just here, but everywhere, it's the same thing. We are bound by law in what that says, so no, we cannot add that onto the ballot. We, we could take, you know, surveys and all that kind of stuff, but even then, you're only, it's only the people who respond that would be telling us, and that's hardly any different than what we're getting here, except probably higher numbers. So, you know, couldn't put on that.
Could we do an exit poll? Could we offer people an option to fill out a little questionnaire and put that out of the polls?
I don't know if you could do it, I don't think you could do it.
You're assuming it's going to fail again.
Well, it's just that...
Well, why do you vote for it or why do you vote against it?
Yeah, and, and is it, you know, perhaps if, if it had continued to be at this, um, reduction or the budget increase to just the one point five and we included these, or if more drastic cuts had been made, it could very well be that the voting public did not want to see these cuts or to this extent, and you wouldn't know that, and you might interpret it the opposite, that, oh, it wasn't cut enough. One doesn't know. How do you, how do you make those decisions? And, and without that proper information?
Well, again, it's all in, no matter how we do it, it's still...
I, I encourage anybody that's interested in that kind of thing to contact the Secretary of State's office, and, because it's a voluntary situation, it's nothing that, it's nothing to worry about. A, a school official certainly can't do that, so...
I've heard the world, I think that the people that had a strong opinion would go to an informational meeting so we could hear from them before.
That didn't happen.
Well, I know that's not...
I said perfect.
Yeah.
But, I mean, the exit polling is a possibility if you have volunteers who are doing it, and they're not, uh, I mean, they could be from a particular political persuasion or whatever, but they have to be a hundred feet from the polling, and they can't be coercing people into voting, and they, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
You guys are really careful about that.
You have to call the Secretary of State to figure out all that.
And it would have to be the exact same in each town, it would have to be written in a way that didn't, you know, lead anybody in any direction, and it's really, can be very complicated. I mean, I just...
Observers for the observers.
Careful. Well, I thank everyone for their reconsideration and for listening, especially to me, because I had a lot to say, and I guess, um, I wish us all success in the future. Um, the idea of inviting folks, you made the suggestion, invite folks to take a tour of the school and especially the cafeteria. I would suggest doing it when the cafeteria is full of students and you can see how difficult it is to get your lunch, not when the building is closed and it's easy to walk in and look around, and then you might notice the tiles. You wouldn't even notice the tiles when the building's full, and, and it's very, very difficult for students to, I know when I, the food service has improved tremendously. A lot of students are eating much more, taking advantage of the food service. The salads are great, the Chef Joe always has vegetarian options, there's a number of folks who are vegetarian, so it's, it's used much more, but the long line and the service and so forth, it's, it takes almost your whole lunch period to get your lunch.
So, we'll let the administration make decisions on it, when they would want. Many people are in the foot of the building, so... Okay, thank you. You're welcome to stay, we're not quite done. We're almost done.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy I came, I'm very happy I came.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, honey.
Okay.
Thank you, Gerald.
All right. Um, we're going back to administrative reports, I hope we'll, um...
I apologize. Last thing I have is, the MOU was passed.
Did we vote?
Did we do anything after that? Yeah, we did vote on that.
Okay, so what did...
We haven't had a motion next, but we're getting to the information meeting, is what we're trying to get to.
We've got to make the date set certain for the information meeting, that's next.
Yeah, there's been a talk, but it's the twenty-fourth, right?
Twenty-fourth.
Move that we have the information meeting on the twenty-fourth.
At what time?
Seven.
It's been moved to have the information meeting April twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. Here, I'm assuming that Leland and Gray and the library, am I right?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Sure.
It's been seconded, seconded. Um, any comments, questions? Not all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Extentions? We talked about the second one, is, any feeling like that's necessary or not?
No.
No.
You don't feel like that? I, I...
I'm asking, they're saying no, but...
You think so?
I was so worried about the Newfane vote, when I saw so many people who voted no, I was stunned.
Yeah.
We've had a much higher margin of, of, um, approval in Newfane, something shifted, and it's such a huge constituency.
Well, we have Newfane representatives here, what's your opinion?
We never should have said pizza oven, we should have just said oven, and it would have passed by about seven thousand.
There you go.
But honestly, it was like mom saying, my kids are going to be eating pizza all day. Leland and Gray, I don't want to eat pizza.
I think Brookline is pizza part.
And they just were like shocked at that. I mean, at least twenty, fifty, twenty people that know that.
It's just a type of oven, right.
I know, it's so silly, but I, honestly, I think it was that, you know, they read up about, you know, they read some details, it sounded frivolous, and it was sad.
I actually heard a couple of comments going the other direction. The, a few people, this is a very personal experience, I don't know how representative they are, but they voted against the budget because they thought there were not enough resources being allocated to some of, some programs that were near and due to them.
So, did our vote tonight make that worse or better?
I don't think it really addressed it.
Kelly, do you...
Do you think that was a change from the previous vote?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, I heard comments about pizza oven and none about the, that the printer was, I mean, that was, that was a non-issue. The people that I spoke to thought that was just bad, they just loved the STEM program, so that just wasn't an issue. But I just heard the, the pizza comment in passing a couple of times.
Okay, well, the purpose of the question was to establish another informational meeting or not.
Sounds like Newfane is not feeling that they need one, or, or are they? Jeremy said no.
I would defer to Durin, which she thinks would help.
Because I agree, the numbers were concerning.
Yeah, but you're not going to get people to show up at an info meeting anyway, they just don't come, so you could have a dozen of them with no people, and you're not any better off.
This was a very new development and a welcome one. People we don't ordinarily see came to really help, which is interesting.
Well, they've been here the last few years.
Would it make a difference if, because Townsend was one of the concerning towns, and Newfane is one of the concerning towns, if we did an informational meeting at Newfane?
That's what...
You mean in Smithville?
Instead of here.
Oh, no, no, we can't move it. I think that would be, that would be a shot at us if, if we didn't hold one in Townsend.
Well, no, I mean, we do, if we're going to do two, we do one in Townsend, because that's close to Jamaica and Wyndham, then we'll do a second one in Newfane.
Right, that's what, that's what the whole suggestion is, do we need a new one? That's what the whole point is.
And we could include Brookline.
Are we going to hold one, a second one in Newbrook or not?
In, yeah.
Yeah, Newbro, right, we could include Brookline.
Right, that's what we talked about.
Do we think people would come?
I think I might rather see us have two meetings. I think I might rather see us have two meetings. If nobody comes to the second one, at least we were there. We gave them the opportunity. They can't say, I didn't know. We're here, we're trying to get them the information on the changes.
Nobody says, nobody's ever complained to me about lack of information meetings.
So if someone wants one, they should suggest a date and put it out and make a motion, and then we'll vote on it. Because every single one of you are committing to this, not just New Fane. It's just so you know. Call these doors, if you can.
I mean, I don't want to push it in either direction. I, I mean, I'm not saying that having the, an additional meeting is going to improve voter turnout or voter approval rate. I just put it out there, and I fully trust the representatives to know what their community needs to hear.
It was mixed from them.
Sorry?
It was mixed from them.
So perhaps if there is a mailing that addresses things like the pizza oven, perhaps the clarification that it was a type of oven, and it's hot really fast, and they refer to it as a pizza oven.
I would suggest we don't mention the oven.
It's coming out.
Keep calling it a pizza oven.
We got rid of the pizza oven.
Yeah. So that it's, right, so that it's descriptive enough so they feel like their needs are being addressed.
I, oh, we're still on the two meetings?
Yeah. If there's a motion, if there's not, we'll move on.
I think the mailer will get one meeting.
You guys have been hanging longer than I have, so I defer to you for your knowledge, obviously.
I would say just stick with one meeting.
Okay, sounds like consensus. I hear, I'm hearing it on both sides, you see. Unless there's a motion to do it, we're going to stick with the one meeting. Okay?
And I do have to say, in Jamaica, I go to vote late, and not many parents vote in Jamaica. That's the comment I get from the people at the polls every time. Didn't see many parents.
Get on the phone, start calling.
So I think that's probably reflective in all the towns, possibly. Parents are real busy and sometimes overlook it. I think Townsend may get a few extras, because they've got a great big sign out on that corner where a lot of people drive by. We've tried to get a sign out at the firehouse. It's going to be a little, in New Brook, New Fane, it's going to be a little harder to make people notice the sign at the town office, but we're going to make sure...
They actually haven't used it there, have they?
They do, no one, because it's always cold. Yeah.
I bet you every person on this board knows two people that didn't show up to vote that would have voted that budget in.
Oh, I do.
You know, including me.
Four.
And, right, so, so all I can say is for that next vote, I'm going to be on the phone, calling everybody I know to make sure the vote is out there, and I hope everybody else does that, too.
Just, just remember that as we call and encourage people to come, that all you're encouraging people to do is not...
Right.
I did that all through Brookline and got people out to vote a no.
Well, that's fine. I mean, what we need, what we need is high turnout, and we succeeded in that, and I think we should, you know, continue.
Now, there are other, there are other people in the community who can call and advocate their position, try to persuade people, that's politics. Did we, Peter, did we vote on the 24th Thursday? Does it show in the motion?
We have not voted yet.
I voted.
It's been moved and seconded. We haven't voted, right? I don't think we, or did we?
No, 24th?
Yeah.
No.
Right. So, so that's...
Oh, yes, Pastor Dan, Howard moved, seconded by Doe.
All right. Thank you.
I'm just checking, thanks.
All right, so we have abbreviated, I hope, since it's 9:30, administrative reports.
Uh, yeah. No, I think we can live without them. Oh, well, the, the policy committee did meet, and we'll have a meet, we'll meet once again every morning at 6:30 at the next, before the next meeting.
Okay.
Not, not the information.
So is this your report you're getting?
Yeah, I'm just trying to move on.
Great, yes, because I would like to see, I know Corinne had emailed.
If there are questions, what?
How about if I do it this way? Without request from the administration, I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions for the administration on the reports that you received via email or anything that went on tonight. Do you have any questions for Stephen, Frank, or Corinne? Or comments?
The dual enrollment?
Yes.
Numbers seem good. That's a cool program.
Very good program.
Yep.
Okay. Others? If there are none, we'll move on.
And the, the, our policy meeting tonight, we are going to address drug policies that are in need of being updated because of all the attention to. Those are a priority for us.
Right, so the, the policy committee is active in reviewing policies that need to be looked at again.
Alcohol and drug-free workplace, drug and alcohol testing, et cetera.
Okay, great. So when there's a report back, you guys can report it again. All right. If there's nothing else for the administration?
Well, I have one.
Go ahead.
I hope you'll take this with a certain sense of humor. I'm very excited about the research of dark matter. And our meeting tonight was an example of not knowing what dark matter is. We don't know what the voters intend with their vote, yes or no, on the Australian ballot. Actually, they're researching a gold mine in South Dakota to try to find dark matter. It's 20% of the universe that we don't, we don't see. And I'm, you know, I'm drawing a parallel to what you're dealing with here and what we're dealing with administratively, and trying to scope out, well, how to best to respond, would it be the budget by Australian ballot? You should have gotten a summary report, legislative report from the ASBA. I do hope you pay attention about those pending issues.
If you knew board members are not getting them, you should let Stephen's office know.
Yeah, anybody's not getting it. The, the two latest breaking things is that a bill was passed, miscellaneous education bill was passed out of the House, which did relieve our small school districts from the annual requirement of an audit, and went back to the senior requirement. Passed by the Senate, that'll be a great, leading to small towns.
It hasn't happened yet.
It doesn't affect us, because we're required as union school district, we have an annual audit. And, and then the property tax was voted out of the Ways and Means Committee. That bill, I think, hasn't actually passed yet, but it does propose a 98, 98 cent, raise a 4 cents on the, on the homestead property tax rate, instead of the dollar one that was presented at your town meetings, in your town reports. And so when we report again on the budget impact, tax impact, you know, Frank will be able to produce one that's based on the latest figures from the House Ways and Means Committee. I think those are the highlights.
All right. Keep your ear to this, because there's a lot going on. We've got another month for the State House. Okay. Consent agenda, we need a...
There's a small mistake in one of the minutes. It says Deion Newton was here, and she was.
Okay, so let's, um, let's approve, let's not do consent agenda, we'll approve it. Do you know which one it was?
Yeah, the March 11th.
There's, okay, so you're making a motion to approve the March 11th with a change?
With a change, right. Removing Deion Newton, who wasn't in attendance.
Okay. Remove Deion Newton's name, who was not in attendance, because she's no longer, was no longer on the board by...
She was no longer a board member, right.
March 11th. So she couldn't have been, well, she could have been, but she wasn't. Okay. So any other corrections to March 11th? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve our minutes from March 11th, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Somebody needs to make a motion for March 25th now.
It's moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any corrections, changes? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Bills and payroll? Oh, just yanked it out, we'll make it robust.
Oh, oh, my gosh. There was one that wasn't listed. It's a pay order, but it's not, I don't think it's part of here, because it doesn't...
Do two people review it?
Yes.
Okay.
Neither one of us found that in there.
Okay. Stephen, you're going to have to address this, so...
Sorry? Oh, because you got a question?
Well, this pay order, purchase order was not in there, but it was in the folder, but it's not on the list.
It's not listed on the seller.
So I...
So then you'll just need to give him that. If this is correct with what you've approved in there, is that correct? That one will have to be, or you can add it in.
41,474,99.
We can just pull this out.
You want to pull it out, or you want to add it in?
No.
Okay. All right, so then you will take care of that one. So what we're voting on are warrants of $159,343.47 and payroll of $123,753.77, total warrants of payroll of $283,097.24. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Patty? Is there a second?
I'm seconded.
By Linda? Okay. Everything in here looks good, and two signed everywhere?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.